Can I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certified to the best of each member's knowledge that the Williamsburg, James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, Ms. Aller.
Mr. Riffle.
Hi.
Dr. Kapasos.
Hi.
Ms. Chen.
Hi.
Mrs. Donner.
Hi.
Mr. Hoseng.
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mrs. Ortego.
Hi.
And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mr. Riffle.
Hi.
Dr. Kapasos.
Hi.
Ms. Chen.
Hi.
Mrs. Donner.
Hi.
Mr. Hoseng.
Hi.
Mrs. Ortego.
Hi.
All right, we will move on to announcements and superintendent's report. Over to Dr. Kever.
Madam Chair, good afternoon. Board members, as we get started today, wanted to share that the tenure has begun officially, no longer acting. Took oath of office last week and wanted to let the community know that I, again, am incredibly humbled and excited about this opportunity. Over the course of the next several weeks and months, there will be opportunity for our our various stakeholders groups to share with us perspective, to help build out a transition plan. And one of the key pieces of that transition plan is a survey that to date, we have provided to students and staff, and maybe even as we speak now, heading out to families. And we are asking for some specific items that are on people's minds when it comes to Williamsburg, James City County Schools. The foundation of the work will be built on that data, and additional listening and learning sessions will happen as we get back together again in the fall, and we're excited about those opportunities. Wanted to also talk about test driving a school bus. You may recall that we provided this opportunity for various members of our community that were interested a few months ago. It is happening again, and while I can tell you what it felt like, I think it might be better for you to experience it yourself. There is a form that is available on our website, and it is happening at Warhol High School on Tuesday, June 17th, between 8:00 AM and noon, and we hope that you will test drive a bus with us. The team will guide prospective drivers through the parking lot to gain comfort with the vehicle, and the first 25 drivers to participate will walk away with a gift card and a job application. Last night, I had the opportunity to attend the high school jazz night at Jamestown High School, where all three high schools put together and played jazz music, and it was a phenomenal event, and really enjoyed seeing Ms. Chen and Ms. Hunley there. It reminded me, of course, that our school division, WJCC, has been named one of the best communities for music education over the course of the last eight years. We have a phenomenal music education program, as highlighted last night, and over the course of the spring. Wanted to congratulate all of our musicians for their dedication to practice and performance, and to our educators for their continued commitment to our student and the arts. Last week, we started celebrating the Class of 2025. Now, this particular celebration was celebrating the Class of 2025 retirees. We wished them farewell. They had a wide-ranging impact, from the classroom to the school bus, frontline to behind the scenes. We're grateful for their passionate work with our students, and we wish to let them know that they will always be part of the WJCC community. Also, last week, we celebrated the GED ISAP completers, the Class of 25. The event was a celebration of their hard work and excitement for their next steps, and we wish them the very best as well. Tomorrow, late afternoon, early evening, we are asking folks to join us along Duke of Gloucester Street as we begin formal celebrations for the Class of 2025. The community is encouraged to line Dog Street before the parade steps off at 5:30 PM. And last, but certainly not least, our Class of 2025 celebrations will culminate with our graduation ceremonies on Saturday, June 7th. It's a day-long celebration at Kaplan Arena. Jamestown kicks us off at 9:00 AM. Lafayette High School will be at 1:30 PM, and we'll close out the day with Warhol High School at 6:00 PM. Doors are open to ticketed guests one hour before the ceremony begins. That concludes my remarks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Kever. I believe Mr. Hoseng had some reports, and Mr. Riffle too. Okay, Mr. Hoseng.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first report I have is from the school safety committee. We had a meeting last week. Last year, we had over 2,700, the stop-arm camera issues that took place. This year, so far, we have just over 2,400, so that number has gone down. Hopefully, in the last week or two, that number hasn't surpassed last year's. And we want to give a thank you, a big kudos to the police department, who's helped us out in managing the safety of the students riding the buses. Last time, I talked about an issue that we had, a trespass on the bus. This time, there was another incident where we had a person block a bus with their vehicle. So I want to, again, put out a warning to individuals, please do not try to impede our buses or getting on the buses since they are school property, and those two issues are still being looked into. Just wrapping up for the year, the committee is going to be looking into redoing the crisis plan that we currently have, conducting a summer safety audit. They participated in the Voices Tour, and we received some good feedback from the students. One of the things that they did ask is to do more drills. They liked the drills, and they want to feel basically still part of the school and safety, or safe in the school, so they requested more drills for that. I will be looking at renew- reunification training this summer. We're going to continue to add safety or threat updates to schools. One of the things that we're looking into is putting in more bollards in front of the schools that will prevent vehicles from driving into the schools or through the school doors. And one of the things that we're looking into or asking community members who use our schools throughout the year for special events is to ensure that you're paying attention to the issues, like not blocking exits. The fire department is going to, we're going to try and work with them a little bit closer to have them come in and look at the events that are going on and make, ensure that the fire exits are all clear and not being blocked by tables or other things that the events are putting on. The next issue I have is with New Horizons. We had a meeting also last week. We approved the budget for New Horizons. It was almost $26 million, which was an increase of almost $1 million from the previous year. This includes a 3.5% salary increase for employees, 50% healthcare increase, which New Horizons is taking care of, and the hiring of a new security officer. For Williamsburg, James City County, that equates to a 17.6% increase in our payment to New Horizons, which is almost $2.8 million. And a lot of that is based on the numbers of students that we have at each of the three facilities that they have. All three have gone up, so the number of students that we have at the Governor's School, at the Career and Tech Education, and for Special Ed have all gone up for the next year, so that's the reason why that has increased. We approved a personnel report similar to what we normally do in our meetings here. And just to give you some numbers, for the Career and Technical Education students, Williamsburg, James City County has 158 students attending next year, and for the Governor's School, we have 22 students attending. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Mr. Riffle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attended WHRO meeting on May 21st with Dr. Kever. This is his first meeting as superintendent. We did some organizing ourselves. The chair of the committee was from Chesapeake, and she had to step down because her family is moving away. And so the vice chair has stepped up, and then they nominated a vice chair, which was then myself. And so I was like the vice chair of the WHRO's Education Committee. We heard, oh, we then we, that's just, once we did that, we then organized the WHRO board, which seeks approval from, because we, WHRO was founded by the Education Committee first, and then WHRO was existing afterwards, so it kind of follows its own nature. So we elected five new members. There's five people rolling off, and so they're putting five new members on. Those are people from around the peninsula and across the roads, and the 27 localities who participate in WHRO, 21 localities participate in WHRO. Then we heard a general summary wrap-up from Camper Consulting. Heard about mostly the topic of the SOL law change and some questions like that, dealing with attendance, absenteeism, self-imposition policy. Stuff that we've kind of done ourselves here and kind of working through, nothing new news, it's just kind of more things like to think about, chew on, and probably look at over the summer. Then they talked about their other reports, and then they kind of facilitated our schedule for next year, so. Pretty simple meeting, nothing too crazy. It was pretty pouring down rain once we got there, but it stopped. It didn't stop, sorry. It was awful. So, it was going to be nonetheless, so I'm appreciative of my colleagues for electing me the vice chair. I'm excited to move into chair role a year from now, so.
All right, well, congratulations to Mr. Riffle.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your report. Anything else from board members? All right. We will move on to item 5.01, review authorization for VHSL memberships for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Adstat is here to talk us through this particular agenda item. Welcome, Adam.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kever, and members of the board. This evening, I am presenting information on our annual membership application fees that allows WJCC student athletes to participate in high school varsity athletics and activities through the Virginia High School League. The VHSL requires the annual membership fee plus an additional fee to obtain catastrophic insurance for athletes throughout the league. Each school pays a membership fee of $800 plus $35 for each varsity activity participated in from the previous year. Additionally, an insurance formula is used to calculate the fee per school. The league directs us to use the previous year's roster to provide an estimated number of athletes by sport. The fee is $5.50 per student, and our current application uses rosters from the 2024-2025 school year to estimate insurance needs for the 2025-2026 school year. The individual applications for each school are attached to the agenda item, and the VHSL membership fee for each school is paid from the individual school's operating budgets. So for this year, Jamestown High School is $4,003.50, Lafayette, $4,383, and Warhol, $4,124.50. Each application requires express written authority of its school board with the understanding that the high school subscribes to and agrees to follow the rules of eligibility and all other rules, regulations, and policies of the league. Thank you for reviewing the three applications for the 25-26 school year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adstat. Are there any questions on this? Does not appear to be any, so.
Thank you very much.
All right, item 5.02, review the 25-26 federal program grant applications for Title 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Ms. Ford. We're going to get you that PowerPoint clicker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kever. This afternoon, I am pleased to present the proposed grant applications for the federal programs, Titles 1, 2, 3, and 4, for the 2025-2026 school year. To begin with, let's review the purpose of each grant. Title 1 provides personnel and resources that supplement academic programming intended to increase academic achievement for all students in the identified Title 1 schools. Title 2 supports training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. Title 3 advances language instruction for students with limited English proficiency, and Title 4 provides funds for programs and activities to improve students' academic achievement. State funding of the grants is formula-based and is impacted by factors such as student enrollment and low-income data. Based on guidance from Grant Specialists at the Virginia Department of Education, applications are typically written using the current year's allocation, which are the amounts you see on the slide for Titles 2, 3, and 4. When the state releases the updated allocation amounts in the fall, school divisions submit amendments to the applications to adjust for the final allocation amounts. In the case of the 25-26 Title 1 application, the state recently released the preliminary FY25 allocation, resulting in an increased anticipated funding. We'll begin with looking more closely at the Title 1 grant. Title 1 Part A provides funding to support programming to ensure all students have access to a high-quality education so that they may meet the state's rigorous academic standards and close achievement gaps. The Title 1 program supplements literacy and math instruction at seven of the nine elementary schools in WJCC. At the targeted assistance schools, shown here in blue, Title 1 staff and services support children in grades kindergarten through third. And in the school-wide programs, all students, families, and staff in grades K through 5 benefit from Title 1 programming. Last month, we submitted applications for DJ Montague and Laurel Lane Elementary Schools to be recognized as school-wide programs. We anticipate a response from the Virginia Department of Education to those applications this summer. Title 1 programming in WJCC prioritizes the use of federal grant funds for direct services to students. 92% of our Title 1 funds are allocated to 12 full-time, school-based positions and three partially grant-funded positions. Title 1 positions include seven literacy interventionists, one at each Title 1 school. There are three math interventionists at the school-wide programs at James River, Norwich, and Matthew Whaley. And in this year's application, we propose hiring a student support teacher to be placed in the newest school-wide programs at DJ Montague and Laurel Lane. During this school year, grant funding has provided 21 tutors in our seven Title 1 schools. In addition to school-based staff, the grant also partially funds division positions, including my role as Title 1 coordinator, two literacy intervention coaches, excuse me, two literacy instruction coaches, and the federal program's data analyst. Other Title 1 priorities include providing professional development that will support teachers with job-embedded training and coaching to strengthen their ability to implement evidence-based instructional practices, and supporting parents and families to be actively involved in their children's education through parental involvement programming and the provision of high-quality learning tools for use at home. I am pleased to share that this year's Title 1 staff have led 17 division and school-based Title 1 parent and family engagement events and activities, with more planned before the end of the school year to support continued learning through the summer. Next, we'll review the Title 2 grant program. Federal funds are awarded under Title 2 Part A to support programs that improve student academic achievement by increasing the number of qualified teachers in the classroom, increasing the number of qualified principals and assistant principals in our schools, and enhancing the effectiveness of educators in impacting student outcomes. The primary focus of our use for Title 2 funding is to support training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. 77% of this grant will fund personnel, services, and employee benefits, including a full FTE for the organizational development specialist position that plays an essential role in onboarding and supporting novice educators in their first three years of service, and 50% of the FTE position for the secondary math coordinator position. Partial funds will also be allocated to positions that manage the Title 2 grant. The remaining 23% will support professional learning experiences for new teachers, internal and external professional development that will enhance initiatives in our strategic plan and educator licensure and certification exam fees. Let's look next to the Title 3 program. Federal and state regulations require that students who have a native language other than English and are not fully proficient in English be provided with specific English language instruction and other programmatic services to ensure they attain proficiency in English and meet the same rigorous academic state standards as their age-appropriate peers. Title 3 funding is used to supplement local funds to support this specialized instruction. Additionally, Title 3 funds are also used to provide high-quality professional learning for the educators who serve our multilingual learners and to meaningfully engage those students, families, and our school community. It is our proposed plan to continue to utilize Title 3 funds in a manner that is consistent with division initiatives to serve our multilingual learners. Title 3 funds support the implementation of the Elevation Platform, which is an integrated information and instructional learning management system specifically designed to meet the needs of educators who serve multilingual learners, and Imagine Learning, an off-to-class learning platforms. Computer-based suites of individualized, adaptive instructional experiences designed to enrich the language experiences and acquisition of our students in K-12. We also intend to utilize funds to support professional development for LEAP and content and classroom teachers, our Language Instruction Summer Enrichment Program, and multilingual learner parent and family engagement initiatives, such as our Family Learning Workshop Series and Community Outreach Programs, which include our Welcome to Williamsburg series, LEAP Parent Academies, and Summer Nights in the Grove. Last, we will review the Title 4 grant funding. To support the continued growing population of multilingual learners, Title 4 funds will be transferred to the Title 3 program to support English learner instruction, resources, family engagement, and to continue providing partial funding for the multilingual learner family and community engagement coordinator position currently held by Mr. George Rebus. In closing, I would like to thank Ms. Jessica Cato, Ms. Marie Nice, and Ms. Alena Trott for their leadership with the Titles 2, 3, and 4 programs. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Before I ask for questions, would it be possible, unless it's already included in our package, just to get a summary of those numbers? I know you said of the numbers of positions and FTEs that are for each one. I tried to write them down, but I didn't get them all. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to know a little bit more about Summer in the Grove. It's the first time I've heard of that. Is that a night event, or do we get invited, or? I was just curious what it was.
I'm going to let Ms. Marie Nice.
Okay.
Title 3 and 4 coordinators speak to that. A wonderful collaboration between our schools and community.
Good evening. So, Summer in the Grove is an opportunity for our families to get together, some of our school personnel. Ms. Lynn Witt had led that, our ESL specialist, and we have some volunteers come out and work with our families, and they do engaging, entertaining events. It's a networking opportunity just to get our families together. We provide resources for the families, information for them. But again, it's an opportunity for us to get out in the community, to really work with our families, to hear from them, to hear about what they need from us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, board members? Looks like that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Ford is
Sticking around.
sticking around, and we'll be joined by Ms. Mompoint as we preview some shifts to the WJCC Division Literacy Plan. Robin.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kever. This afternoon, Mrs. Mompoint and I are pleased to present you with an update for the Division Literacy Plan. As you may recall, Virginia legislation requires every school division to develop a literacy plan that addresses how the local school board will improve literacy outcomes for students in kindergarten through 8th grade by aligning evidence-based literacy instruction practices with science-based reading research. In accordance with the guidance provided by the Virginia Department of Education, WJCC's literacy plan addresses six components. Planning for comprehensive communication, selecting high-quality instructional materials, ensuring Virginia Literacy Act evidence-based reading research training, monitoring student assessment and progress, assessing division-level progress, and engaging our parents and community. I will begin this afternoon by providing you with information for the outcomes of the student and staff goals in the 24-25 plan you approved last June. And Ms. Mompoint will review the key components of the 2025-2027 plan. The student achievement goal for the Division Literacy Plan is the first goal of the strategic plan's key priority. By June 2028, we expect that at least 85% or more of our students will meet proficiency on the state literacy assessments, including the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener, known as VOWs, and the SOLs. At this time, SOL testing is still underway. However, we can report that 79% of our K-2 students are on track to meet grade-level literacy expectations according to this spring's VOWs screening results. On this slide, you can see our students' fall and spring performance by grade level with the blue bar representing
with the blue bar representing kindergarten, the red bar representing first grade, and the green bar represents second grade. You will hear more about our students' performance on the new VOWs screening tool during the key priority presentation that is scheduled for the June 17th School Board Meeting, and again in the fall during the student achievement presentation to the board. The remaining goals in the 24-25 Literacy Plan are focused on professional learning and curriculum implementation. Professional learning for administrators and staff has been a priority for WJCC this year. In addition to professional learning based on the standards of learning and literacy curriculum, our staff are required by legislation to complete online professional development modules created by the Virginia Literacy Partnership Office at UVA. On this slide, you can see our administrators, reading specialists, and teachers' progress toward completing the training by the end of this school year. As of the end of May, sixty-one percent of the administrators and reading specialists at the elementary and middle school levels have completed the training modules, and ninety-three percent of our elementary teachers have submitted their certificates of completion. It is important to note that while we set our completion goal for the end of this school year, under VDOE's guidelines, currently employed staff have until September 30th to finish the module series. It is important to understand our teachers' perceptions for the impact of professional learning. In May, we asked elementary teachers to complete a survey focused on the training they have received this year. Eighty-six percent of the elementary staff who participated in the survey reported an increase in confidence in implementing evidence-based practices in their literacy instruction, while eighty percent feel their knowledge for the many facets of research-based literacy instruction has increased during the 24-25 school year. The two remaining goals in our 24-25 Literacy Plan are focused on the implementation of high-quality instructional materials and student engagement. To facilitate the collection of observation data for curriculum implementation and student engagement, the Division Literacy Team has collaborated with the design team at E-Observation to develop a literacy walkthrough tool specifically aligned to the instructional look-for's in the Benchmark Advanced Program. Prior to using the tool, we put multiple supports in place to ensure that our teachers were prepared to implement Benchmark with fidelity and engage our students in meaningful practice with the instructional materials. Those supports have included professional learning delivered by the Division Literacy Team during Camp GPS, Pre-Service Week, and the Elementary CLP Days, weekly collaborative literacy planning with reading specialists, and coaching provided by the reading specialists and the Division Literacy Coaches. In the winter, elementary administrators were provided an orientation to the new walkthrough tool, and throughout January and February, each elementary principal hosted a series of classroom walkthroughs with administrators from other buildings, along with staff from multiple departments. In all classroom visits, observers collected evidence of curriculum implementation and student engagement. Each school visit closed with a collaborative activity during which the participants discussed their observation notes. These reflective activities serve as important opportunities for our leaders to deepen their knowledge for evidence-based practices and strengthen the consistency of the feedback our teachers receive across our system. The literacy walkthrough tool will be further revised this summer in response to the feedback that was collected during this leadership activity. In response to a survey question about Benchmark Advanced, seventy percent of the eighty teachers who responded to the survey agree that the instructional materials support evidence-based literacy practices. Year one of the implementation of such a comprehensive curriculum, coupled with shifts in instructional practices, has been a tremendous undertaking for our teachers and reading specialists. The Division Literacy Team and reading specialists will lead the Year Two Plan to support teachers to more deeply understand the core instructional components, the wide catalog of assessment tools, and the supplementary resources that will enhance teaching and learning. As this teacher's quote highlights, the role of coaching will also continue to be a priority for Benchmark implementation. While literacy plans for 24-25 focused on actions to support core K-5 instruction, all school divisions are required to submit new literacy plans this month to address literacy instruction and professional learning for kindergarten through eighth grade. The new literacy plans are biennial plans requiring review and revision every other year. At this time, Mrs. Mompoint will provide you with an overview of the 2025-27 Literacy Plan.
Good evening. The foundation of the WJCC Literacy Plan continues to be our vision, that every student in our school division is continuously growing as an engaged learner who reads, writes, and communicates across multiple disciplines to build knowledge, pursue curiosity, and set themselves on a path of lifelong learning.
Other direction. There you go.
I apologize. Beginning in the 2025-26 school year, the Virginia Literacy Act expands to include grades six through eight. This expansion ensures that middle school students receive the literacy instruction and intervention support they need to be successful across content areas. Tonight, I'd like to provide an update on high-quality instructional materials for intervention and supplemental instruction. Core instructional materials are Benchmark Advanced for K through five, and newly adopted for the 25-26 school year is HMH into Literature for grades six through twelve. As we move up the instructional pyramid, it is essential to support students beyond core instruction with targeted resources. Supplemental instruction is designed to reinforce and extend core instruction by providing targeted practice and skill development. It supports students who need additional help grasping grade-level content and strengthens foundational skills using Lexia and iXcel as resources. Intervention, on the other hand, is more intensive, and is intended for students who require significant support to close learning gaps. It involves targeted, often small-group or individualized instruction with specialized tools, Lexia, and Spire, to help students meet grade-level expectations. WJCC is committed to a comprehensive professional learning plan that supports teachers, reading specialists, and administrators in implementing evidence-based literacy practices aligned with the Virginia Literacy Act. Teachers are participating in a range of training opportunities, including the VLA Professional Learning Series for elementary and middle school teachers. These sessions are designed to deepen instructional knowledge and ensure high-quality core instruction. Reading specialists are engaged in targeted training such as the HQIM Implementation Train the Trainer Series and the Virginia Literacy Partnerships Institute. These prepare them to lead job-embedded coaching and curriculum implementation at their schools. Administrators receive training to support literacy leadership, including sessions on HQIM and evidence-based practices. Their role is essential in reinforcing implementation through weekly walkthroughs, collaborative planning, and progress monitoring. This three-part approach ensures alignment and shared responsibility across all stakeholder groups, helping WJCC build a strong, sustainable foundation for literacy success. To reach our goal of eighty-five percent proficiency by 2028, WJCC uses a comprehensive system of assessments to monitor student growth and literacy across all grade levels. This includes SOLs, iXcel Diagnostics, VOWs screeners, and quarterly unit assessments. Intervention progress is monitored monthly by reading specialists and intervention teachers to ensure timely adjustments and support. These data points guide instructional planning and help us identify where targeted interventions are most needed. WJCC is committed to measuring the effectiveness of our literacy work through both teacher growth and instructional implementation. By 2027, our goal is for at least seventy-five percent of K through eight teachers to report increased confidence in using evidence-based practices as captured through the Biannual Teacher Efficacy Survey. In addition, we will monitor the use of high-quality instructional materials through regular K through eight literacy walkthroughs, with the expectation that one hundred percent of observations will show alignment to our selected programs. These efforts ensure we're supporting educators while staying accountable to our vision for strong, consistent literacy instruction across schools. Family engagement is a key pillar of our literacy plan. Each elementary and middle school will host at least one annual event designed to equip parents and caregivers with strategies and tools to support literacy at home. These events help build strong partnerships between families and schools by providing insight into curriculum pacing, instructional practices, and ways to extend learning beyond the classroom. Through newsletters, school websites, and in-person opportunities, we aim to make literacy a shared journey between school and home. At this time, Mrs. Ford and I are happy to answer any questions you may have for the WJCC Literacy Plan as you prepare for the June 17th vote.
Thank you both. Questions from board members? Mr. Hoseng?
I know last year, with the new literacy program, we had additional training for our teachers coming in. Are we gonna do the same thing for new teachers coming in this summer, or maybe refresher training for returning teachers?
Well, we have a Year Two Plan for all staff members, but we do have a day between the launch days for new staff, both with division activities and their school-based activities and teachers returning, that will be dedicated just to helping our new elementary staff onboard with Benchmark Advance, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Riffle?
On the last slide, we talked about the events, the One Annual Event. Is that something we already do, or is it being implemented in the second year? I just wanted to understand more of how the event works.
Parent and family engagement is an essential cornerstone of Title I programming, so it is required at our Title I schools. We aim to hold at least three events per year, events and activities at our Title I schools, so this is taking that concept and expanding it to all WJCC elementary and middle schools.
Can I ask a follow-up question? How is it, like, the reception, I guess, of those Title I schools? Like, is it because of such a good reception, or like, is it just to implement this across schools to kind of see how the engagement works, or is this just a kind of routine thing that is required? I know it's required in Title I, but I just want to know if it's like, how much value it brings. I just think of, like, staff staying longer and planning of these type of things. Is it PTAs? Like, it asks for more from all the schools at this point, right?
It does require commitment, an additional commitment, from our staff at our Title I schools, but they host events that are really very diverse. Not only do they address students' instructional needs, but they almost always have some type of social aspect with them, very family-oriented. Our schools have had a great deal of success bringing in just a wide variety of programming for our families. And component six of the VDOE's literacy plan structure requires school divisions to address parent and family engagement as well, so we see it as a natural extension of what we're already doing at our Title I schools.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Cavazos?
Yes, ma'am. This is June 2025, so we got till June 2028 to get eighty-five percent of K through twelve at their level. Where are we now?
We don't have our spring SOL results yet, so we will address those results, this spring's results, as our Year One for our strategic plan in the fall, when those results have been released. Right now, our students are still testing and completing makeup tests.
But it's not eighty-five percent. Who is it? I mean, I don't know.
We don't. The data is preliminary and raw, so we can't report on that data at this point.
We don't.
You can look at those, some of the VOWs data that we showed at the beginning of the presentation, which suggested an upward trajectory of students. And you may also remember back in March, when we did a presentation at the joint meeting, we gave the sense that we were generally pleased with the direction that student achievement was trending. That was before SOL testing, so we'll have a better sense, I think, as we get into the summer months, and we'll certainly work with the board to provide whatever information we can in advance of, I don't want to say in advance of the official release, because technically, we're not allowed to, but if for some reason, we're able to share some of the unofficial results, we would certainly do that.
That was just interesting. Let's assume the student population does not increase. It stays around eleven thousand. So eighty-five percent of that gives you nine thousand three hundred and fifty students. So that should suggest maybe one thousand six hundred and fifty students aren't going to be at grade level. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of students.
I think aspirationally, every one of us would want it to be at a hundred percent.
Correct.
I don't think there's any question about that, and going back to our discussion, even in September and October with the board around where do we potentially set the KPIs, where do we potentially set the goals? I think there was some rich discussion amongst the board in terms of, yes, we want it to be a hundred percent, and we will continue to aim for that. We don't want there to be any students that aren't reading on their grade level or at a proficiency level.
Any questions from anyone who hasn't asked one yet? Mr. Riffle?
Ms. Chen hasn't asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, no, I'm sorry.
No, not the chair.
Ms. Chen. Since we're on that topic, I was just hoping for a little bit, and I know that it'll be coming in June, so if there's more data, that'll definitely be interesting to look at and discuss, but I was hoping for some more just elaboration on Slide Three, which is where we do have, like, the data point. It is, I know, just one, and we will get more results, and hopefully, the SOL results. And I don't know, is there another chance for students to take the VOWs? I guess I just want more explanation, because I understand that there is an increase, but like, grade one is the same. It doesn't, I'm just wondering, sort of, if there can be some elaboration on these percentages, just for more understanding for us, as well as, like, families who are looking at this. And then my second question is just around, like, historically, I mean, my sense of our division is we're, we do pretty well with most of our students, and so is this pretty much where our numbers are, or are they increasing? Like, are we always sort of, can't break through a certain percentage point, you know? So I'm wondering if you could just provide some context and elaboration.
Let's talk VOWs first, and then we can get back and pick up the second question.
So, what makes our data unique this year is really thinking about it as Year One again, because you're used to hearing about POWs, which was the predecessor of VOWs, of the screening tool. And that was the screening tool as it existed for more than twenty years without revision. So this is Year One, along with all of the other pieces that are in place with the Virginia Literacy Act. The POWs screener was significantly overhauled and revised to become the VOWs screener that we have used this year. It is a longer assessment. It assesses more skills and at a much more rigorous level. So, coupled with the reading research that we are aligning our practices to, the state is aligning our assessments more closely to the changes in the reading research that is now centering our work. And so, we can't compare where we are this year with our student scores to the previous tool, VOWs. They're just different tools, and we would be comparing, we would not be comparing apples to apples. They are measuring literacy skills, but they measure a different range of literacy skills and at a different level of rigor. So, we are certainly seeing this as a foundation from which we plan we will grow. All of our students in grades K through two next fall will be reassessed with VOWs, so we will be able to start looking at individual students' trajectories, and are they growing from spring to fall? And then, we'll be able to have a better analysis in the spring of how they've grown as compared to where they're ending this year. Our students are assessed three times a year with VOWs in grades K through two. We assess them in the fall, again in January, and then in May. And it is the determination of where they fall in the risk band as to whether they require reading plan. So, it's that Virginia Literacy Act and all of the components of instruction, high-quality materials, assessment, and then the follow-up with including our families and making sure we have plans for all of our students. It's coming together.
And in this particular year, I believe the SOL test has also changed.
It has.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, one of the challenges in comparing year-over-year with SOL results is when there is a recalibration of the SOL test itself. Anecdotally, in conversations with other leaders around the region, there is an initial concern that maybe scores that we have been used to are going to be a couple points lower than where they are this year. Part of that, I think, is natural when you recalibrate a testing program. Um, again, not the goal and not desired, but oftentimes you will see a dip in scores year over year when you have a new testing program. The, the second part of your question was related to, um, where we have been organizationally with reading? Is that what you were referring to, like?
Right, like, if just as a division, we're sort of, we serve a certain percentage students really well, and there's, like, we just can't sort of break through a certain barrier. I know that when we discuss the stra- strategic plan, we all, as you had mentioned, we, we want to set our goals really high. Yeah, I just was struck by this, this slide, and, and was wondering if it was, um, sort of indicative of a trend and, and something that we need to, to dig into more, um, and elaborate on. But also, I understand that this is, you know, the first year as well, but I don't know if that.
I think that, right, I,
Remise my question.
My, my expectation for us organizationally would be, as the final SOL results come in and we are able to disaggregate that and look at it more carefully, and then get into year two of the vowels assessment process, and look at how students are performing, we'll be in a better position to have, a stronger dialogue with the board and the community around what it, what it means. I'm not displeased with the initial results, but certainly not satisfied. And I think there's a, there's a nuanced difference there. And perhaps as we get into the fall and start talking about KPIs and, and data, we can come back to the board with information very specifically on the vowels assessment and, and what that means and how that works, so that there's a firm understanding for that, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be helpful, and I'm looking forward to the, the data. And also just very specifically, I think, aggregately, but also, I think, I mean, I would be interested in, and I'd love to hear my other board members when I discuss as well. But, um, by school breakdown of students, like high need students, because I think that's, that's sort of where the gains are going to be.
Absolutely.
Honey had a follow-up.
That was exactly what I was getting ready to ask. Um, so when you were showing the, with the red and the blue and the green lines, that would be helpful, I think, for us next time to see that slide again, uh, compared to the neck, you know, the vowels. To see how did that actually work itself out? But I do agree, because what we're looking at is total school-wide, and we are gonna need to break that down to see, you know, wh- what's, if, uh, one school is doing very well with whatever supports they have for vowels and have made great gains, to make sure the schools that are struggling, that we are making sure we're sharing those, um, supports with them, or whatever strategies are working, or so. But, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in seeing as well, um, not just a broad, but also specific.
Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, I'm, I'm similarly, well, I would follow. I also wanted to ask about the SOL recalibration. I, I also think that, like, it's not, it's worth mentioning maybe the plan, uh, literacy plan, like, what, the, the, I guess, the grading of the SOL next year, moving into mastery and kind of accreditation and stuff. This might be Mr. Walker's question, but, um, this is a lot of things, you know, clearly changing over the one, two, three year, right? Um, I just think it's a lot of stress to put our staff through, and like, it's something that only our students to learn and, and pick up. So, uh, I, I think I'm somewhat in alignment with Dr. Keever in understanding. But, um, I also think there is a place for our dashboard to kind of really kind of, as it gets implemented, we can kind of track this a little better, and maybe not ask as many questions, but just kind of jump around there for, you know, a nice time in our own homes. But, um, I just, uh, my question would be like, how do we, as we look at the literacy plan and like, is it going to change? As we kind of maybe hear from the Department of Education of how, like, uh, like literacy scored, of how that's input in our grading system, and also, you know, literally moving from pals to vowels, right? Like, that data looks very different from, from what we have charted in our current dashboard. It's a big question. I just wanted to see if there's like, how's it, how's it feeling, Mr. Walker? Or how can we kind of better, like, work with you all and understand, like, kind of where you are and how we can kind of assess this, this, right now, this road block is, or road stop, as we kind of look at the next, you know, chance. This is our only chance to evaluate the literacy plan. This is why, you know, there's things we're missing, or, you know, the years are kind of not like, you know, we should be aware of as things kind of change throughout the year, you know, or even July, the new law changes and stuff.
So let, let's peel that back just a tad and see a couple pieces of information, just as a reminder. And, and Mr. Walker can also provide some additional context. The SOLs that have occurred this spring are going to feed into a new accreditation model, which is how the schools and the school divisions will be accredited in the coming year. The, all of the specifics with that are not fully, um, provided to us, frankly. And there will be accreditation ratings, uh, there are the four different levels, and Mr. Walker can remind me exactly what those are in just a, in a minute. But those accreditation ratings will be new and different for us, for our community, and we're gonna need to spend some time this fall talking about what they mean and how we are adjusting to those. S- similarly, this was year one of a new SOL standard and a new test, or new tests and a new curriculum for our staff to grapple with and learn and to, to work on refining over the course of the year. We're talking about three fairly seismic educational shifts happening all at one time. I don't think we're in a position on June the third to dive too much deeper into what we may need to do relative to the literacy plan until final scores are in and we have a really strong understanding of what it looks like building to building, student to student. One of the challenges that we have is that before the end of the month of June, we need to submit an updated literacy plan. So w- we're providing to you what we intend to submit in terms of our revised literacy plan, but that does not mean that if the results come back and we're able to look at it carefully, that we may not come back and say, mm, we need to have a reverse gear and look at this in a different way based on what the data is telling us. So we, we are going through the bureaucratic process to provide the Virginia Department of Education with a necessary literacy plan, but that doesn't mean that it will become a document that sits on the shelf and we don't revisit it for another two years. I think you have the commitment from administration that we are gonna continue to look day after day at how we put our students in a better position, and not just some students, but every student in a better position, uh, to read with proficiency. So, John, remind us of what those four levels are.
That was an excellent summary, Dr. Keever. Thank you for that. Those new four performance categories, um, if a school earns X amount of points, they will be deemed as exceeding expectations by the state. Next category down is on-track. Next category down is off-track, and then the bottom category would be needs intensive support. And preliminary data, when they, uh, the VDOE provided school divisions with the twenty twenty-four spring results and plopped them into this new accountability framework, we were looking pretty good. Um, I believe we had two schools that were just meeting the, um, just missing the on-track category. We actually had a school hitting the exceeding expectations, and all others were on track as well.
And, and one additional piece of information that I think is important in terms of level setting is just maybe last week or the week before, I believe the Board of Education approved standards related to work-based learning and how that will filter into the three E's in terms of accreditation. There are students that are, that have registered for courses for next year and are in the process of being scheduled, and we are just learning what the requirements may be. So we've, w- we're doing the, our level best to put every one of our students in, in the right position to be successful. But we, we do wanna talk about literacy more, for sure.
I, I just wanted to provide an outlet to speak on this, because I, I know there's a lot changing, and we'll hear a lot from the community and even our own staff, and as those things come down, so I, I, I know we're not done with it on June thirtieth, and I wanted to share with the community. I do have a question beyond that. We, we do talk about eighth grade writing. Um, I was just looking at, I have a similar question in that, Ms. Chen, of like, I was looking at the past two years, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three on the dashboard. It seems like we kind of, it comes, like, we can't get past, like, fifty-four percent of our students passing it, um, at a certain level. I just, I think there is a, a thought that, that there's, there is a threshold, and it's like trying to understand that and like what, we can do this. Because, you know, that is gonna be a part of this accreditation stuff, and I just, I want to hear more about writing. I mean, that's, there's only three writing exams for students, uh, throughout their time in K through twelve, and it's probably their last chance to get caught before they go to high school, so, um, and I don't want them to, you know, not get the resources they need. So, and there's a lot inside that I understand, but, um, I, I just think about myself in that position of, like, eighth grade to, next time you take a writing exam and then you graduate, right? So it's, um, there's a lot that goes there, so, I, I know this is part of that, so I just wanna kind of piggyback onto that, like, what's up with the trend there? Kind of data, and I know there's nothing exactly we can do, it's just more for us to kind of digest it and kind of move through the next year, so, so thank you.
I have, um, was every, anyone else had a question? I had two questions, um, and they might not be, I don't know. The, when we say, say, let's say even we were at eighty-five percent, um, what we, we're trying to get for, for twenty twenty-eight. So that's fifteen percent not, not meeting, you know, the, the expectations. Is the majority of that fifteen percent young, young kids? Is it, is it, is it heavier on the younger kids who might, you know, are learning to read versus reading to learn? Or is it pretty steady across K twelve? Because there's a big difference between second grader who can't quite read and a tenth grader who can't quite read.
Right. When we look at our elem-, I can speak to our elementary SOL scores. When we look at our elementary, grade three, four, and five SOL scores in reading, we typically see that increasing trajectory of success. Third graders, that's the first time they're taking that test. It's a rigorous test. Uh, they're younger. Um, by fifth grade, they are, they've become more proficient, they have more background knowledge, they have a wider vocabulary. The role of background knowledge and vocabulary in reading comprehension is significant. So that has certainly been an area of emphasis for us at the elementary level with the Benchmark Advanced curriculum. Is, uh, from starting in kindergarten with our youngest students, increasing that background knowledge and vocabulary, so that as they matriculate through the grades, they are able to read and write with better comprehension. So, yes, it's, it's not unusual to see our younger students perform not as strong as their peers who are two years older.
Right. I guess I'm con-, I'm just wondering if, um, and maybe this is what Ms. Chen was getting at before. Like, are we seeing the kids that can't quite catch up or they're behind in young years? And that just carries throughout? Or is it just really heavy on the, heavier on the younger kids? And maybe there's only, you know, a very small percentage in high school who can't, trying to, you know? You know what I'm saying? If you can't, I, and I know third grade is a, is a marker, right? Like, if you can't, if you're not, not up to speed by third grade, your trajectory for features, you know, not as great. Um, so I, I just, maybe that's not answerable right now, maybe we still need the new data, but, um.
I think what, I think what we could do is to look at SOL reading results at various intervals where the SOL reading test is taken over the course of the last couple of years, and then come back to you when we have the results from this new calibrated test and look at year over year, where the students demonstrate, students are demonstrating a lack of proficiency. And be able to say, it looks like X, or it looks like X in this particular place, but Y in this particular place. I, I don't, we're not in a position to do that this evening for you, other than to look in the rearview mirror and say, something available on the dashboard.
Okay. Um, then just generally, as, as much as you can, I know you don't have, you know, it's not like a survey was taken. What has teacher feedback on Benchmark been over the course of this year, other than it's a learning curve?
That they feel overall, it has given them the tools that they need to, um, implement evidence-based, um, literacy practices. And they have truly appreciated all of the professional learning opportunities that have been integrated both at the school and the, the division level this year. And there continues to be a need for more of that, because it just truly is such a comprehensive and rich program with resources. So learning to use all of those resources to address their students' needs, but coupled with the shift in literacy instruction practices that have come about as a result of the research that's been focused on over the last few years. So shift in practice coupled with a very comprehensive and new curriculum, um, it has created a learning curve. And, and I would say where we are now, um, anecdotally compared to where we were in the fall, the stress level has come down, but teachers are still learning to juggle the components and understand how to address their students within much more consistent, um, frameworks across our division. So we're pleased with the positivity and, and the shift and, and the increased comfort level that we've seen, and seeing teachers just really take off and flourish with this, and our students likewise. Um, we visit, as we've visited many of our schools, um, we've had administrators and teachers comment and be very proud to show off the writing that their students are doing, which is tremendous. So we feel very, very positive about where we are now. And I truly believe that it will just continue to improve and, and strengthen as we move into the first half of next year.
Okay, and even the schools that didn't chew, didn't want Benchmark initially, they're, they're?
They, everybody is, is onboard, so to speak, and, and they are, they're in the trenches and learning, and, and most of all, just invested in their students. Everyone wants to do the very best they can and see their students be successful.
Okay, thank you.
I think in a large degree, our, our teachers are anxious for the results, like you are, like we are, because of the amount of time spent in, with those students every day, and recognizing that there are some challenges with the course of this year, just in terms of the newness of everything. There, there's a desire for the results to bear out the work that went into it.
Anything, oh, Mr. Riffle, do you have another?
I do, I do, I'm gonna clarify that. Actually, when I was reading, it's not passing on the dashboard, it's, it's actually proficiency. It's a very different thing. I'm, so to suggest that half our students did, more than half our students did pass the SOL for good writing. Proficiency is a different category in which the state does our students. So I think the words, when we talk about this, really do matter. Um, I also wanted to say that I'm actually very encouraged by this slide three. Um, I'm, because I think kindergarten is like the class where actually, this is kind of calibrated towards, right? Like, these students have not learned, learning, like, the science of reading ever, right? First grade and second grade, they've learned a version of reading two years ago, right? So they're all gonna be recalibrated themselves of, and their, and their teachers, right? So I'm excited to see how this kindergarten class does, um, into, I know it's a lot of pressure on the kindergarten, but I think it's interesting to see, like, this is where actually, like, the state's requiring, like, thinking about this, it's like, this is gonna carry throughout their first through the third grade. This is gonna be the benchmark class of how Benchmark works, right? So I'm just interested in that, that regard. So I'm encouraged, as much as, you know, I, I am not satisfied with Dr. Keever, but I think we should point to that as being a, a result of, this is what science of reading is supposed to be doing, so.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
I just, one quick thing to add, in future presentations, I think it would be helpful, since Benchmark is so new, at some point, um, if the board could get, um, just, I'm glad that things are going well and teachers are bought in, but when we voted for it, it was quite contentious, and we did all get a lot of communication and, and frankly, continue to get communication, um, about, uh, maybe things that aren't going as well. So it would be great if there was some clarity and maybe a presentation about everything that's going well, which is amazing, but also things that maybe haven't gone as well, and, and what the plan is to sort of, alleviate those pain points. Um, specifically, I think novel study was something that, that a lot of teachers and families were concerned about. Um, and, you know, so I would just love to see data as well as specific examples. Um, and there seems to be, um, and, and just consistency, I think, across the schools and experiences for our students. Um, just, just so we're know we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. All right, I think that's it. Thank you. All right, item five point zero four, um, review revisions to the, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Student Code of Conduct.
Dr. Brown is joining us this afternoon to talk a little bit about the revisions to the Code of Conduct. And just as a reminder, we'll also look at two policy revisions a little bit later in the meeting. just as a reminder, we'll also look at two policy revisions a little bit later in the meeting uh that align with these revisions. Adam?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Kever. I am pleased to present the revisions to the WJCC Code of Conduct for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. This year, our focus was to transform the code into not just a disciplinary guide, but also a resource that supports students, families, and staff. The revisions align with our division's strategic priorities and is based off of the feedback provided by multiple stakeholders from around the division. The updates that you'll see this afternoon are designed to provide greater clarity on the supports available to students and ensure that our practices are consistent, proactive, and aligned with Elevate twenty-eight, specifically our key priority of academic achievement and safety and security. The revisions were developed through a collaborative process involving two separate Code of Conduct committees. The division's committee was comprised of school administration, behavior specialists, counselors, special education professionals, parent and community liaisons, and members of the Department of Student Services. Additionally, the Department of Student Services went to schools throughout WJCC to talk directly with students about their thoughts on discipline, the Code of Conduct, and ways in which we can support students. From these conversations, several themes emerged. Common themes that emerged between the committees included the need for the Code of Conduct to highlight resources and available supports throughout the division. Whether it's reviewing the role of key personnel like social workers, our information regarding the restorative center, committees requested that more attention to available resources will allow better understanding of how to support students inside and outside of the classroom. Second, it was requested that the Code of Conduct continued to provide additional alternatives to suspension and create a shared understanding of interventions and our disciplinary practices to promote productive conversations between administration, school staff, and the student and parent. Third, it was requested that the Code of Conduct had more parent and student-friendly language. This includes revamping our policy section to speak more to the essential understandings of the applicable discipline po- policies in lieu of including the entire policy within the document. These themes point to an overarching goal in making our Code of Conduct no longer just a list of rules, but a roadmap for support. We've reorganized the Code of Conduct into four clear sections, resources and supports, interventions, responses to discipline, and policies. This makes it easier for users to navigate and understand the full range of what's available. The resources and support section, for example, now includes a detailed overview of attendance expectations, MTSS supports digital safety and substance abuse awareness. Another example includes school and division-based interventions that can be used at any point to help students regardless of the discipline process. Our goal is for the reader to find guidance and clarity, not confusion, when using this resource. In the resources and, and supports, excuse me, we've expanded this section to include proactive initiatives such as Find Your Focus, our internet safety campaign, campaign, bullying prevention, and a complete list of school-based services, from special education to mental health supports. Additional pages like the restorative center and information from health services and CHIP highlight our investment in holistic programming for students. While these services are already in place throughout WJCC, we can now utilize the Code of Conduct to better guide schools and families towards identification of needs for students. One specific addition that I'd like to highlight within the resources and supports is the Supporting Healthy Choices page. This features our approach to informing families and students about the dangers of substance abuse and how to access resources. First, WJCC will be utilizing the Botman Curriculum next year, which is part of the VDOE opioid abatement education plan. This curriculum that will be taught within all health classes from grade six through ten is an evidence-based opioid abuse prevention program, which raises awareness and provides education about the risk of opioid use, misuse, and abuse. Additional topics within this curriculum include topics on alcohol abuse and awareness, positive and healthy relationships, and addressing topics of anxiety and resolving conflicts. For students in need of additional interventions and supports, WJCC has partnered with Colonial Behavioral Health for a streamlined referral process for services, providing streamlined access to real-time solutions and resources. This focus is not only based on behavioral data, but feedback from students and staff, and has prompted a need for an increased focus in this area. Highlighted in an upcoming slide, formal support plans offered through the Department of Student Services will be available for students to demonstrate patterns of substance abuse and require additional curriculum and our monitoring and support. As requested by both committees, we've also drawn a clear distinction between interventions and disciplinary responses. The staff and student input sessions request the need for a shared understanding of how interventions and disciplinary practices are used throughout the division. The Code of Conduct now outlines specific interventions that could be used with common language and examples of school-based practices. Alternatives to suspensions are emphasized throughout, aligning with our division's focus on reducing exclusionary discipline. One of our new additions in response to providing increased support for students is the Student Services Action Plan. This plan is a formal agreement involving the school, student, family, and student services. It ensures structured monitoring, personalized goals, and ongoing check-ins. It also serves as an alternative to long-term suspension when appropriate, particularly for students in need of tier-three interventions, like substance abuse support. Example, a school may be working with a student who's been provided with a series of short-term suspensions and continue, continues to demonstrate a lack of response to interventions at the school level. In lieu of assigning the student to a recommendation for, for a disciplinary hearing, considering long-term suspension, the school can now recommend the development of an action plan. This recommend, recommendation provides the school, family, and student services an opportunity to meet the central office, review the student's overall progress, identify necessary supports and monitoring, and establish goals for the student. The goal of the action plan is to support and reinforce behavioral change, not just enforcing rules. Finally, the policies section has been redesigned. We've rewritten the pol-, this section in a more parent-friendly language, provided QR codes for easier access, and provided direct links as well to the full policy. The goal was to increase understanding, especially for families navigating the discipline process for the first time. Policies now come with a brief overview, making them easier to understand without sacrificing clarity or compliance. Following the board's approval of these updates to the Code of Conduct, the Department of Student Services will continue their work with schools about updates to the Code of Conduct, analyzing discipline data to set year-long behavioral goals, and provide continued training and support on school-based discipline practice, practices, and intervention support. We also look forward to reporting out on the KPIs in the fall, and at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Uh, Mrs. Hunley?
I have a question. Do students receive this or parents hard copies anymore, or does this come out only electronically?
Uh, both, so they can receive a hard copy, um, and we do print out hard copies, and I believe at the secondary level, every student receives a hard copy of it. And also in our first day in back-to-school campaign, it's provided electronically as well.
Okay, that was my question for people that might not, I met, I met a, a gentleman that was a, a grandfather, I think, he said he didn't even have a cellphone, and so, and, and personally, this is my husband and I don't have laptops, th- this is the laptop, and so what happens if someone doesn't have a laptop, like, I like seeing it big like this, but if you're on your cellphone, or if you don't have a cellphone, how do we get the message to them that they can get those hard copies?
So the hard copies are actually handed out, especially at the secondary level during student orientation, so they can bring it home, it's also I have a stack of them in my office, they're welcome to come by and pick them up. Um, another item that we talked about and also received feedback from employees and parents and students is the Code of Conduct's great, and we understand the purpose of it, but it's the supplemental resources that we need to create to cry, provide easier understanding on specific like whether it is going through due process, or whether it's, I would like to appeal a suspension, or I want to know more about the services available, what can pro-, provide as supplements to this document.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Riffle?
Hey, thank you, Dr. Brown, this is a great, I know we talked about it in some other forms and fashions, and just want, it's good to see it in a presentation, and I'm glad it's kind of I, I guess I have a question inside that as well, from, is it gonna be like rechecked by students or any other group again, or is it kind of in its final phase at this point?
Part of our process, I guess, in the development of the next year's Code of Conduct, and what we did this year was in the fall, we actually went out and met with groups of students throughout the division and had them review the Code of Conduct. Um, we will go through that same process, and their feedback actually was a starting point for our division Code of Conduct Committee. So there'll be a review process of these changes that will filter into next year's committee.
Thank you.
One last question, so after they read it, do the parents still have to check saying that they've received it, and if they don't check it, then somebody follows up with them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Um, are there, other questions, sorry, I was just reading something on here, are, are there other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Item five point zero five, review calendar recommendation for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We asked the board to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar in the fall. During that conversation, we also shared with the board that the committee was interested in getting to a two-year calendar process so that we could all plan ahead for vacations and holidays and those kinds of scenarios. Ms. Wall has ably stepped in to lead the calendar discussion, and she is here this evening to walk us through um the dialogue on behalf of the committee.
That's right, thank you, Dr. Kever, good afternoon, Madam Chair and School Board members. This afternoon, I'm presenting background on the academic calendar pa- planning process and the calendar committee's approach to bringing forward a twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar. The calendar compi- committee is comprised of community stakeholders, staff members, family members, and some individuals who wear multiple hats. We invited new individuals interested in serving on the calendar committee to express their interest via an engage-with-us form in mid to late April, and also welcomed back veteran members of the calendar committee. The committee met twice, once to consider the initial proposed academic calendar, and once to review community feedback on that initial proposal. I'd like to thank the committee for its time and thoughtful dedication to this work. Our philosophy in building the draft twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar was guided by several tenants. Historically, our school division has built calendars with one hundred eighty instructional days, and we maintain that approach in the twenty-six, twenty-seven draft. Members of the committee and the community have offered that the start of those one hundred eighty days in August, and specifically around mid-August, would allow for more instructional time before the May window of SOL exams and AP exams, which was also considered in our approach. From there, we layered in other key components, our calendar references student holidays, but it's important for our community to remember that student holidays are also staff contractual days designated for collaboration, learning, and planning. Teacher contracts contain thirteen CLP or workdays, and placing those strategically throughout the year is also of importance. Past and current feedback to the calendar committee has underscored the preference for two full weeks of winter break and one full week for spring break. So with that philosophy in mind, the committee puts together the calendar puzzle with all of those identified pieces. In its first meeting last month, the calendar committee discussed a twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar structure that was first previewed in an October twenty-twenty-four presentation to the school board. The calendar would contain start and end dates of Wednesday, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-six, and Friday, June fourth, twenty-twenty-seven, respectively. Tuesday, November third is an election day, and as has been the practice for several years, that Monday and Tuesday were proposed as student holidays and staff CLP days for family conferences. In this scenario, this initial scenario, Friday, January fifteenth would be the ninetieth student attendance day, or halfway through the one hundred eighty instructional days, and it would be the end of the first semester. This coincided nicely with the Martin Luther King Junior holiday on Monday, the eighteenth, and a proposed student holiday and staff CLP day on Tuesday, the nineteenth. So while the committee had this structure, it concurrently sought community feedback on this proposal, while also seeking clarity from the Virginia Department of Education on school division's ability to start school more than fourteen days before Labor Day. Via email and text, we invited families and staff to participate in a survey on the proposed calendar between May nineteenth and May twenty-seventh. Participants were asked first to respond to the proposed twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar. When combined, seventy-eight percent of staff and seventy-four percent of families expressed positivity toward the proposal. Meanwhile, as I had mentioned, we were doing two things concurrently. Meanwhile, VDOE indicated that the only current pathway to start school more than fourteen days before Labor Day is by implementing a year-round calendar. While there were opportunities in two thousand eleven and two thousand eighteen for school divisions to seek waivers to start school more than fourteen days before Labor Day without the year-long calendar stipulation, it does not appear that WJCC or any regional school division sought waivers at those times. So with these two pieces of information, the quantitative survey results and the information from VDOE, the committee reconvened to review the qualitative survey responses and consider its ultimate twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar proposal. Like always, the calendar committee grappled with the idea that it won't be able to make everyone happy as it pieces together the calendar puzzle. On one hand, some respondents liked the start and end dates of August nineteenth and June fourth, and on the other hand, some respondents would have liked the start date and end dates to be either earlier or later. As I mentioned before, the calendar design is a puzzle. If we are to have one hundred eighty instructional days and two hundred and three teacher contract days, the puzzle pieces of all stakeholder preferences become challenging to fit together. Some of those preferences include starting after Labor Day, ending before Memorial Day, maintaining two weeks of break at winter, one week at spring, and then adding in a fall break, a full week of break at Thanksgiving, and additional student holidays in the spring. What was clear, though, was that while there was quantitative positivity, the story painted by the qualitative data yielded some opportunities for adjustment. Some survey respondents commented on the academic calendars of our neighbors and differences that may exist. This information is presented here to demonstrate how closely aligned we are with our neighbors. We have a great collaborative group of administrators that talk through calendar design as our respective school boards and calendar committees are considering future academic calendars. And I look forward to continued dialogue with them. So with all of those various inputs, the historical approach in WJCC, the regional approach uh among our neighbors, community feedback, and the restriction, restrictions placed on us by VDOE, the committee revised its proposed twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar to parallel the structures implemented in this current school year and what's been approved for next school year. The one exception I'll note is that because of statewide curricular requirements, we had three additional elementary-specific student holidays this current school year, and as the board approved last month, there will be two additional elementary-specific student holidays next year. That's, those are not reflected in the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar. This view of the proposed calendar displays first semester. While two weeks or fourteen days are always tallied the same way, fourteen days are fourteen days, how those fourteen days fall on the calendar, of course, depends on where Labor Day falls. In twenty-twenty-six, the first Monday in September, Labor Day, falls on the latest possible date, as you can see, Monday, September seventh. Therefore, absent an applicable VDOE waiver, as I had discussed, school can start no earlier than Monday, August twenty-fourth. However, in a year where Labor Day falls on September first, the first school day could be Monday, August eighteenth, again, that fourteen-day mark. As is required by state code, you can see in this proposal, Friday, September fourth is noted as a student and teacher holiday. Many school divisions in the Commonwealth that start school before Labor Day are required to have a student and teacher holiday on the Friday preceding Labor Day. In response to community feedback, the committee moved a student holiday and contractual staff CLP day from Monday, October fifth to Monday, October twelfth. For some families, this would align the student holiday with parents' time off for the federal holiday. Second semester or marking periods three and four are displayed here. We would maintain Friday, April second, the Friday before spring break, as an early release day uh for pre-K through twelve, all grade levels. June fourth and seventh would be early release days for high school students, and June eighth and ninth would be early release days for all grade levels, pre-K through twelve. The proposed twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar with the August twenty-fourth start date is the consensus of the calendar committee, but was not a unanimous recommendation. Committee conversation and community feedback wonders about our philosophical approach to building calendars. Primarily, should we continue to be guided by a one hundred eighty-day academic calendar, or should we consider tallying instructional time by the state-allowed nine hundred ninety clock hour methodology? And the response to that question could then have cascading impacts on the approaches to start and end dates, scheduling of breaks and student holidays, and other areas where we've received feedback. If there were to be a change in approach, the committee wondered if that philosophy should be applied as soon as the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar, or if it might be applied in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or beyond. The opportunity to share the committee's uh thought process, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Donner, go ahead.
Nine hundred ninety clock hours, so how many clock hours is there? I was guessing like six, and that looked like a hundred sixty. Nine hundred ninety clock hours, so how many clock hours is there? I was guessing like six, and that looked like a hundred sixty-five instructional days. But what's the math on that?
Varies based on level, because we have different number of hours per level. Um I don't know that off the top of my head. We could get that for you. I don't think it's in the one-sixties. I think it's. In the low one-seventies. However, again, it varies by level. Uh high school is different than elementary and middle. One of the reasons we have not recently had to make up time. Is that we have been able to utilize the clock hour um surplus, as it were. As a as a rationale for not adding days back into the calendar. This year, we were out of school seven or eight days for weather. And did not necessarily need to make those up.
Thank you.
Let me, Mrs. Humley?
Okay. I've served on calendar for many years and woo, so I know. It it's like, oh my gosh. So I'm still kind of confused on one thing. So when when we hear teachers say, um and this is more elementary teachers who are. Do work this twelve-piece form that they're doing now at the end of the year. That they need more time at the end at the count- of the calendar year to get those the paperwork done. Whereas middle and high school, a lot of their stuff is electronic. They just submit it. Um elementary people have to break down a room, break down bulletin boards, do all this. The other other levels can kind of just. Walk out the door. So is this the calendar where we see? What support they're getting at the end of the year, like, or is that a different calendar?
Yeah, that's a different.
So when is that? When are we talking about that one?
Once this one is locked in. Yeah, so this is guiding the academic calendar, right? The student attendance days primarily. There have been discussions, for example, in the August nineteenth version of start date. When I had alluded to the fact that first semester could end before Martin Luther King Junior Day. Historically, there's been a CLP day in the January. Timeframe, the calendar committee thought it would be nice to pair that with the federal holiday. Um so there are some conversations of where those pieces align, but generally speaking, this is to set the the student academic days.
All right, I'll hold my others for the next one.
Okay, thank you. Did you have your hand up, Mr. Riffle?
Yes, I served on the committee. Um I did not do the puzzle as much as I did not a year before, because there's just a lot more complications this year. But I do want to thank the people in the committee for their service and the kind of maybe about the second to last slide. Kind of allows us to have some of a discussion today about the eight hundred eighty. I think Dr. Kever presented something that actually no one brought up. During our committee with uh the banking of days. I think most people just preferred having less. I think the rationale was that the less um early release days. Better. I think there's like the the major philosophy that was kind of pivotal to most of the staff and and if not parents, they're all support of the committee. And that's kind of the general understanding I have, because we're legally allowed to. But if we do have like seven days of snow again, or internet issues, or whatever may come about in a school year, I I I did not consider those things. So it's generally I hear from, I know that maybe we'll get to that point, Madam Chair, but um I think there's just worth kind of maybe hearings philosophies or like. You know, different perspectives on this, just as we kind of go about this discussion, because um. I I I think it's just fruitful for us to understand, because we can lock it in and keep doing this for the next, you know, foreseeable future, or we kind of. Maybe see different versions of this calendar structure, like can be like calendar committee moving forward. I don't know, but. I don't want to like throw a discussion to go kind of without, you know, some type of work from us as well, right? Because, you know, we ultimately vote on this, so.
So are you?
I just want to. I guess like it would be open to opening, I think, to be more of discussional on the hundred eighty to ninety. Or just like in general, like maybe getting us to preference ourselves, or kind of give like what they think about this um.
You're wanting to hear from other board members, what they think?
Yes, please.
Uh sure, we can. I can open it up to anyone who wants to weigh in. I think Dr. Kever summarized um the. The reason you might use the clock hours versus instructional days, but are there other board members that have strong feelings?
I mean, I have a strong feeling that we should do a hundred and eighty days and not the clock hours. It sounds. Think that having the oppor- I think the more time that we have to touch and work with kids is important. And even, you know, even after all the exams and the bonding that the kids have. And, you know, that they enjoy being able to be with their teachers at the end of the school year. And they, I mean, they're still doing things like, I can only see from an elementary school perspective, but my daughter's class is building. Ta- using AI to build taco trucks and um putting together menus. Thinking about what taxes do you charge, and so there's still learning that's going on, but they're able to do it in a fun way. And I don't, I don't, and they also, the elementary school teachers use the kids to help clean up the classroom too. But I I just, I think that there's more, I think that there are still benefits and there's still learning that's happening after exams. And I I'm not quite sure the benefit of cutting that off and then also putting us in a space. Because if you go to the nine ninety and then you have to add hours and parents are going to be upset, because then they're like, well, I booked my vacation. And I my kid can't go, and so I think it's just, I'm in favor of keeping it at the one eighty.
Mr. Hosey?
I completely agree. Not that, I was just going to say the same thing. With a hundred and eighty instructional days. It gives the school system, it gives the parents, it gives the students, everyone, structure. And says, look, we're going to be in school from this state to this state. We've got built-in snow days. So if we have another weather issue or computer issue, we have the time built in that we can. We don't have to change that end date where parents are going to, families are going to be scheduling their their travel already. So I think this gives the community, it gives the school system, it gives everyone the structure that we need to get to have all the instruction. Provided um without having to adjust anyone else's schedule.
I do not disagree with anything that's been said. Is that? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I am. I I I also just like, just want to hear about people interpret the law and like go about this business. It's it's new to me, like, I think. Yeah, I heard from the WHO like last year that this is actually not a state requirement anymore, and our board didn't take it up when Dr. Herring heard that. She was like, she's from one eighty. Right, like, and Dr. Kever similarly feels the same way for the reasons if, if you say that I also want to avoid the virtual learning days if possible. I get this thing like it's not very productive for our staff or our students. If we come to those things, I just feel like it's very, and I'd rather have, you know. Like the a longer year, which is not, it's like a day, if you're looking at the calendars, than suggested, so. Um I just wanted to give us a chance to kind of talk about it more publicly and and kind of give the committee at least a place to look back and be like, this is why. And not just Dr. Kever being like the superintendent that's mean and scary, so.
Only where he's acting, though.
Exactly.
I I will just mention that if the the legislation continues to move forward. And the next General Assembly session around SOL tests being the last ten days of school. We may organizationally want to look at how we structure the calendar in order to potentially accommodate that. I I think that the way the calendar is presented for twenty-six, twenty-seven is an appropriate recommendation, and I would urge the board to support that. But as we begin to get into the process, I think as early as next fall of looking at what does twenty-seven, twenty-eight look like. We we may need to consider potential adjustments with with starting and ending in order to accommodate that legislation. I believe it has to go through the session another year before it takes hold. And it's probably something that we'll want to talk about in general with with respect to where we are on. Testing and the school calendar and requirements from uh the General Assembly and Legislature on that.
And and wouldn't that also give us time to ask for an exception to start the school year fourteen days prior to?
Yeah, we understand, Mr. Hosey. I I I will say that I was um. Surprised that there is not a current model available for a school division seeking to start fourteen days. Like you, if you didn't get on the train in twenty-ten or twenty-eighteen, the the train is not coming back for you. Or unless you want to go year round. So we perhaps, and I'm not suggesting, please, I'm not suggesting. Year-round school, but perhaps we do make a case for additional waiver opportunities through the legislative process. If if that's something that we want to take up as we get into the to the fall.
Mr. Riffle?
This is just kind of a side, maybe I'm going to move to sidebar, but I'm seeing it blown up. It's still kind of hard to like, I don't like the circle thing. Can we, is there a way to like change the shapes on the calendar to be like more descriptive, like, uh, I don't know, it's like these tiny dots versus like. I don't know, someone mentioned this to me the other day, and it was like an older lady, and I was like, I agree, like. I'm just suggesting the committee has power. We have power, but if if this if this person's like, this is awesome, like, I don't know, I'm just saying it's a little confusing. This is my comment last year, and people, because I took it a different way, but I feel as if this is still a weird practice, like why do you use all circles? But I, no, like, we have a Nickelodeon splat for some reason on twenty-four of August.
First day of school.
Yeah, well, where's the, where's the Nickelodeon at the end of the year, you know, like, okay, so anyways.
We will continue to refine how we present.
All right. Oh, Mrs. Donner?
I think a stronger argument might be if we're talking about accessibility for for those that can. But I also, as a parent, I think you've gotten used to it, so I kind of know what the circles mean, and I can read a key.
I can deal with it once a year. It's okay with me.
You could suggest that when you serve on calendar.
No one, no one mentioned it, I think, so I just wanted to give us a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh we will move on to item five point zero six, review purchase requests to Everdriven Technologies.
Mister Snipes is joining us for the next several items. Marcelos?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kivers. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports the key priority of organizational. Efficiency efficiency and effectiveness, and is being brought for your consideration is a review of purchase requests to Everdriven Technologies LLC. Under the cooperative contract number R-one-nine-zero-four-zero-one. Um with Omnia Partners to contract for transportation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um each year, WJCC contracts with a third-party vendor to support and transport uh students. Uh without the contract support, the division would be able to support uh efficient and timely, would not be able to support. Efficient and timely transportation for all WJCC students. Uh the estimated cost for the school year twenty-five, twenty-six is one point three million dollars. And the term of the agreement shall extend from the end of this school year to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. The superintendent recommends that the board review the information and be prepared to vote at the June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, Mister Snipes. Um so Mr. Riffle and then Mister Hosey?
Um thank you, Madam Chair. I I had some question, because I'm looking at the fees for service. Are they using our vehicles to to them? Okay, because I was like camera fee, wheelchair fee, like, we we already pay for these things, so.
No, this is a third-party vendor. They use their own vehicles to do that.
Sure, thank you, Miss Snipes.
Mister Hosey?
And is this a basically a pay-as-we-use-it contract? Uh and the reason I'm asking that is because I thought. One of the last meetings, we were told that we've got an increase in bus drivers for next year. So how would our increase in bus drivers affect this contract?
We have an increase in bus drivers um from uh from about eighty to about ninety-three. However, those bus drivers are being used for K through twelve education. Uh we still would need additional supports to support our McKinney-Vento students, um some sped students um that we're currently transporting. Currently, uh we are transporting about seventy-two students, um and fifty-four of those are McKinney-Vento. Excuse me, fifty-three of those are McKinney-Vento, and fourteen are sped, and five are what we would consider regular education.
Our ultimate goal is to wean ourselves off of a third-party vendor contract to the greatest extent possible. There are, I think, there is a case to be made for some of the third-party transportation scenarios. So we are not utilizing a driver and an aide to transport singleton students to. Localities outside of Winford, James City County. The model is such that it is uh the the cost can go down with the more drivers we have that can accommodate. The student need. What we've seen over the course of the last three years is initially, we were utilizing uh the service for. Students with special needs, students with disabilities, but that has shifted to more of our students that are experiencing homelessness. Or fall into the McKinney-Vento category. Our goal is to utilize contracted services in a very small amount. And to take more advantage of our own staff driving our students. Does that answer your question?
I understand that's our our goal, and that's, and I mean, I think that's what we're all looking for, and I'm just trying to throw out. With the increase in our number of bus drivers. Is there a way to basically for cost savings where we're not going to use everything in this contract?
Couldn't tell you that today, and probably wouldn't be able to tell you that until we get into next year. Because while we have additional drivers, part of the, part of our need as an organization is to create more efficiencies with our routes. Meaning fewer students on the bus for less period of time. Uh and you balance that versus a student or a couple of students needing to go to Richmond with an aide. I I would prefer, and I think we would all prefer, not to put a student on a bus with a driver and an aide to go to Richmond. And instead put them in a vehicle that can transport them. So it's it's a little bit of a give and take. And our challenge with McKinney-Vento changes week to week, month to month. Uh so we're going to, in the next agenda item, talk to you about a revision to the this year's contract. Because we are running fairly tight on the initial allocation of funds. Number of reasons for that, our goal for next year is to not come back to the board talking about a increase in the contract. But to feel good about not spending all of the money that is not to exceed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So it's not, you you basically pay one point three, and that's kind of how it goes for the year, right?
We are, we are asking you to designate a contract not to exceed one point three, but our goal is to not spend the one point three.
Well, I think it's a pay-as-you-go. I just want to straight answer on that. Thank you.
Right, any other questions? Just to give everyone a heads up, we we'd had a a break built in a little bit later where we have to set up for a Zoom. But I'm going to also have a break at the end of Mister Snipes' items here, just so you all, that's up uh through five point zero nine.
Good, I took the speed reading course. Um the second agenda item relates to our existing contract with Everdriven. Um we are requesting that you review the amendment for the twenty-four, twenty-five cooperative contract. R-one, R-one-nine-zero-four-zero-one to Everdriven, and increase authorized funding by seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh on June eighteenth of twenty-twenty-four, the school board authorized the contract to Everdriven in an amount not to exceed one point two million dollars. And while the initial allocation of one more two, one point two million dollars is estimated to carry WJCC through the school year. The requesting of additional funds provides a contingency for the potential fluctuation of transported students in these final weeks of the academic year. The revised estimated cost for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five is one million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh the superintendent recommends the school board review the request for additional contingency funding for contract for Everdriven uh LLC. Uh for seventy-five thousand dollars, which will bring, again, the total cost for FY twenty-five to a cost not to exceed one million. Hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and be prepared to vote at the June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, Mister Snipes. Any questions on this? I think it's pretty straightforward. All right, next.
The third uh proposed agenda item being brought forward tonight is a review for the purchase requests for the parking lot improvements at Berkeley Middle School. To Bay River Contracting LLC under annual contract number two-one-one-four-eight-four-six. In the amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh this project was approved uh in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars in the FY twenty-five capital improvement plan. Uh the scope of work consists of site demolition, uh and exterior improvements, removal, disposal, excavation. And installation of about ninety-two hundred square feet of permeable pavers. The superintendent recommends the board review the purchase requests for Berkeley Middle School parking lot improvements to Bay River in Contracting LLC. In the amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, and be prepared to vote at the June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, Mister Snipes. Any questions on the parking lot? All right, move on to pre-K. That's exciting.
And last but not least, Ops' final proposal agenda item for tonight uh is being brought for your consideration. Is a review of invitation for bid number two-zero-two-five-zero-four-two-two, which is the construction for two pre-K centers. Um on May second, twenty-twenty-three, the board awarded the architectural design and services for preschool centers to Blue Justice Upton. Upton Architects and PPK. The two two hundred and fifty-two student buildings will be constructed on two separate sites at Norwich Elementary and Claretburg Baker Elementary Schools. The target date to open the two pre-K centers is the fall of twenty twenty seven. And again, the project consists of two preschool facilities, approximately forty one thousand, two hundred square feet. Each facility is composed of eighteen classrooms, restrooms, uh, a warming kitchen, administrative suite, in addition to other. Opportunists. The services provided by the contractor shall include but not limited to the furnishing of all materials, equipment, and supervision and labor. The expected release date for the invitation for bid will be June sixth, twenty twenty five, but they do date typically thirty days after release. The award will be based on the lowest and most responsive and responsible bid for the total base bid. Uh, superintendent recommends the school board review the pre-K centers construction information, uh, and be prepared to award. At the the contract at the July eighth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Okay, any questions? So we we don't approve the release, obviously, because this is going out. You're putting it out to bed, okay.
Right, our our goal is to be nimble when it comes to the bids coming back and bringing. Forward to the board at that July meeting, an opportunity to approve the award of contract so that. Perhaps in the month of July, but more likely in the month of August, schedule a groundbreaking and get this project started.
Cause we are behind, right? Cause if I remember, it was supposed to be twenty twenty six before and now it's twenty twenty seven.
We we have, we have drifted, we have drifted into the. Future, unfortunately. I think that I was just um rapper. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Judy say, is that a yes or a no?
Alright.
That's a question for two on ones.
There any other questions before we take a brief recess? Alright, we will, thank you, Mister Snipes. We will take a five minute break.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Ms. Ewing is going to help us with the next two agenda items, Renee.
Thank you, Dr. Kiever. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This agenda item is to amend our fiscal year twenty five grants fund budget to reflect additional funding that we have received. As part of the state budget approved in May, twenty twenty five, funds were allocated to school divisions for a bonus payment. Our allocation is one million, two hundred and seventy one thousand, seven hundred and thirty four dollars, which will be accounted for in the grants fund. With the addition of these funds, it will bring our total grant budget for this fiscal year to nine million, eight hundred and sixty three thousand, forty one dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board, Mister Hosey?
Just for clarification, um. For any bonus payment that we provide to employees, this is coming from the state grant and not from any.
It's a combination, so the next agenda item is gonna provide some specifics around the administration's recommendation.
Alright, then let's move on to that one. Five point eleven, review authorization for employee retention bonus payment.
As I just shared, the state budget this year, funds were allocated to school divisions for staff bonuses to promote retention among instructional and support positions. School divisions have the discretion to determine the amount of the bonuses to be paid per employee to maximize the use of the state funds to promote retention among instructional and support positions. For your consideration this evening, we are recommending a retention bonus payment to currently working employees that received a contract for next school year. And sign their contract by June thirteenth. The amount of payment would depend on an employee's daily hours. Employees working less than six hours per day would receive seven hundred and fifty dollars. And employees working six or more hours per day would receive one thousand dollars. These amounts align with how we've provided bonuses in the past. And these are also the gross amounts before taxes. The total cost is estimated to be approximately two million, seventy five thousand, which will be funded with the one point two seven million in state funds. Sixty two thousand from child nutrition services funds, and the remaining seven hundred and forty one thousand would be funded through the operating fund. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Mister Hosey, did that clarify your initial question?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Oh, Mister Riffle?
Does clarify my question I had had about SOQ. How released? I appreciate the breakdown proof for this.
Okay, sounds like that. Sounds like that was it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Renee.
Next agenda item is really just a board agenda item. It's the review appointment of the SBA voting delegate and alternate delegate. Uh, each year, the Virginia School Boards Association asks all the boards to appoint. Uh, members to the SBA Delegate Assembly and Regional Meeting at the Annual Convention held here in Williamsburg. Um, the delegate assembly determines issues that will be lobbied in Richmond and Washington. Uh, typically, it has been a chair, the chair and vice chair as an alternate. Although anyone can nominate themselves or someone else, and you would not find a lot of protest. Um, but if no one is is uh nominated or or volunteers, then it is the chair and. It'll be me and Ms. Donner as an alternate, um, would be appointed to that delegate assembly. So you will approve that, I guess, at the next meeting. Alright. Then we will move on to um information discussion items, item six point zero one, W J C C grading practices. And I will also signal there will also be a brief recess after this one, um, just for the purposes of setting up a. Zoom call for the second, for the next agenda item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Courtney Mompoint, uh, over the course of the last couple of years, has been. Working with a group of teachers and administrators to carefully examine grading practices within the school division. She's here this evening to. Update the board and community on the work of of that group. Courtney?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Kiever. Tonight, I'm pleased to provide you with an overview of our work on examining grading practices in the division and provide next steps for grading in W J C C.
Hold please.
Yeah, technical difficulties.
We're going to load that grading practices PowerPoint right up. And then Courtney is going to share that information with us. Oh, boy.
Alright.
Switch on the side.
I'm having no success tonight. It's on.
Dang, there really should be a. Have you ever messed with an easier clicker?
That would happen.
Is this the easier one?
Great.
You guys have a good rest of the evening.
Alright, examining grading practices to ensure fairness and consistency across classrooms directly supports W J C C strategic plan. Elevate two thousand twenty eight, particularly the key priority, academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity. Our grading systems play a vital role in how students experience school, how they understand their progress, and how they are prepared for life beyond graduation. Over the last two years, W J C C has engaged a diverse and dedicated group of educators, teachers, specialists, and school leaders. In a deep exploration of our grading practices. This work has centered on understanding the impact of traditional grading systems. Identifying areas of inconsistency and reimagining grading in a way that better reflects student learning, growth, and potential. The purpose of the grading work groups was to examine current grading practices across our schools. Identify opportunities to ensure they are more consistent and aligned with student learning and clearly define the purpose of grading. These groups brought together teachers, administrators, specialists, and other stakeholders to explore research. Share experiences and evaluate how grading policies and practices impact students. Our goal was to create a shared understanding of consistent, fair grading and develop actions that prioritize clarity, fairness, and accuracy. Ultimately, the work groups served as a collaborative space for reflection, dialogue, and system level improvement. Our initial work began with developing a common definition of the purpose of grading in W J C C. From our collaborative reading and multiple discussion protocol activities, a common definition emerged. Grades should reflect accurate, timely, and meaningful feedback that supports student growth, promotes learning opportunities, and informs instructional decisions. Grades are not a reflection of behavior or compliance, but rather a demonstrated, rather a demonstration of what a student knows and can do. To guide this work, we intentionally brought together a diverse and representative group of educators from across the division. Over the course of the two years, we held twelve structured work group meetings. The team included twenty three elementary teachers, seventeen secondary teachers, sixteen K through twelve administrators. And sixteen members of our division level instructional staff and senior leadership. This collaborative group of seventy two participants brought a wide range of perspectives and experiences to the table. Helping us reflect on current grading practices and develop shared understanding around more fair and consistent approaches. Their voices and insights were central to the work and ultimately to the actions we're sharing with you today. As part of our exploration, we also supported small scale pilot implementations of alternative grading models to better understand how they function in real classroom settings. At Lafayette High School, teachers in eleventh grade English piloted standards-based grading, focusing on clear alignment between student performance and specific learning objectives. Meanwhile, at Matthew Weldon Elementary, a pilot centered on ungrading and portfolios. Allows students to reflect on their growth through self-assessment and portfolio work rather than traditional point-based grades. These pilots will continue to provide valuable insights and help us consider what elements of these models might be scalable or adaptable across the division. A key component of our work during the first year was data collection in the form of gradebook audits and collaborative readings of scholarly research on grading practices. These texts served as both a catalyst and a compass for our conversations. Helping us examine the foundations of traditional grading practices and their unintended consequences for student learning. Through guided discussions and reflection protocols, we explored topics such as the importance of separating academic achievement from behavior. And the need for consistency and transparency in grading practices. The research built a shared language and understanding that laid the groundwork for deeper collaboration in year two as we moved from reflection into action. In year one, we also expanded our exploration by studying several altern- alternate grading models that offer more consistent approaches to assessing student learning. We examined standards-based grading, which focuses on students' mastery of specific learning goals rather than averaging scores over time. This approach emphasizes progress and clarity. The fifty to one hundred grading scale was also was considered as a way to minimize a disproportionate weight of zeros. In a one hundred point scale and bring more fairness to grading calculation. The fifty to one hundred grading scale is a modified one hundred point system that raises the minimum possible grade to fifty instead of zero. This approach reduces the disproportionate impact of a single failing grade on a student's overall average. It promotes a more balanced and mathematically fair representation of student performance while still holding students accountable for demonstrating learning. We also explored gamification, which uses game-like structures like leveling up, earning badges, or re-attempting challenges. To increase student engagement and motivation, especially for students who might feel disconnected from traditional grading. Finally, we looked into ungrading and digital portfolios, which encourages reflection, self-assessment, and feedback over points and percentages. Allowing students to tell the story of their learning in more authentic and personal ways. These models sparked rich conversations and gave us a broader. These models sparked rich conversations and gave us a broader lens for considering what is possible and what is most meaningful for students and teachers in WJCC. In the second year of this work, we knew it was essential to hear directly from our stakeholders, those most impacted by grading practices. We conducted feedback sessions with students, teachers, families and the Special Education Advisory Committee to better understand their experiences, concerns and priorities related to grading. Each group brought unique insights that helped us see not only the challenges with current practices, but also the possibilities for change. Their voices helped shape our emerging recommendations and affirmed the need for more transparent, consistent and student-centered grading systems. Before we look at how each group responded, I want to briefly define the core topics that emerged across all stakeholder feedback. These five themes surfaced again and again, grading consistency, rubrics and criteria, effort versus mastery, mastery, late work and retakes and feedback. While each group approached these themes from different angles, there was remarkable alignment in the belief that these areas directly impact fairness, motivation and transparency in grading. This chart highlights the key themes that surfaced across all stakeholder groups, our teachers, students, families and CAC. What stands out is a strong alignment around several core areas. All groups consistently raised concerns about grading consistency and called for clearer expectations and fairness across classrooms. There was also agreement on the importance of rubrics and criteria. Stakeholders want grading systems to be more transparent and easier to understand, particularly for students and families. Effort versus mastery sparked meaningful discussion. While students, teachers and CAC emphasize grading based on mastery, parents expressed mixed views, valuing mastery but also wanting effort to count. Late work and retakes emerged as another area where all groups recognized the need for clear, fair and consistent guidelines. And finally, feedback was a unifying theme. Everyone wants feedback to be more timely, personal and meaningful rather than automated or vague. This alignment across perspectives reinforces the urgency and opportunity for system-wide improvements to make grading more consistent and supportive of student learning. Based on the feedback from all stakeholder groups as well as the knowledge gleaned from our research, the following action steps will will move our work forward on consistent grading practices. First, we will establish consistent grading weights and category definitions across courses and grade levels to ensure clarity and fairness for students and families. We recognize the need for clear division-wide guidelines on retakes, redos, late work and extra credit to ensure that all students have access to opportunities for success. Clear communication around these practices is essential for students and families. We will also revisit the fifty to one hundred grading scale and evaluate the feasibility of full implementation based on data, feedback and alignment with our goals. To support these changes, we'll provide ongoing professional learning focused on grading practices, including how to give authentic, actionable feedback that supports student growth. In addition, we will continue to explore and pilot standards-based grading in selected schools and courses to gather additional insights and build capacity for future implementation. Professional learning opportunities will launch this summer to help teachers and leaders prepare for the implementation of these revised grading practices. To ensure a smooth and intentional transition to more consistent practices, we have mapped out key actions from now through August. In June, our focus is on finalizing consistent grading weights and categories across courses and clearly communicating expectations in summer learning for summer learning opportunities to staff. In July, we'll begin developing a professional learning module for both teachers and administrators and initiate planning for administrative training that will emphasize grading consistently, consistency, monitoring and support. In August, we will deliver those professional development sessions for teachers and host targeted administrator sessions. This will include strategies for leading grading shifts and supporting school-based implementation. Also in August, we will finalize and distribute implementation guides and FAQs to support consistent practices. We will also launch the division-wide implementation of revised grading expectations and ensure that all schools have access to support through grading champions and coaching. These next steps ensure that we are not only aligned, but also equipped to support both students and staff in a successful rollout this fall. As we move into the twenty, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year, our focus shifts to full implementation and ongoing monitoring of our aligned grading practices. All schools will be expected to follow the established grading guidelines with support structures in place to assist teachers and students. I'm sorry, to assist teachers and leaders in this in this transition. Administrators will play a critical role in this phase by conducting classroom walkthroughs, reviewing gradebooks for consistency and facilitating conversations with instructional staff. We will continue to engage teachers, students and families to gather feedback through work groups, surveys and department meetings. These insights will help us understand how the changes are being experienced and identify areas that may need additional clarity or support. It will also be important to monitor the impact of these grading shifts on student learning outcomes and engagement. This includes examining data trends as well as anecdotal evidence from classrooms. Finally, we recognize that this work is iterative. We are committed to making adjustments as needed based on what we learn with the ultimate goal of creating a grading system that is consistent, transparent and reflective of student learning. We will continue to keep the board apprised of the progress of implementing more consistent grading practices in the school division. Before I conclude, I would like to take a moment to extend my heartfelt thanks to our grading work group members. Thank you for your time and courage to rethink longstanding practices in service of students. I would also like to thank the many stakeholders who participated in our feedback sessions, our students, our families, our teachers, administrators and CAC. Your voices were essential. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Monpoint. Uh, questions from the board? Mr. Hosang?
So am I understanding this correctly that we're going to a fifty to hundred percent grading scale?
So right now in our middle schools, um, our middle schools have implemented, um, have implemented in in some part a fifty to one hundred grading scale um, where the fifty is the the lowest um grade that a student can can achieve. We still want to gather more feedback from our teachers. We received feedback um over the last two years um about that implementation. Um, and so we want to get gather more feedback from our teachers about how that might be impacting their work in the building. Um, and so that's where we are right now with the fifty to one hundred grading scale.
Okay, I I guess I'm just extremely concerned on that. Um, how are we teaching our students that they don't have to turn in homework? They don't have to take a test and they're going to get fifty percent already towards their grade? Um, I think we are doing a huge disservice to our students um if we're going to have that of standard. Again, that's just personal opinion that, I mean, we're not, if I go to to work tomorrow and I don't turn in a brief that I'm supposed to write, the judge is going to yell at me, my boss is going to yell at me. We are not setting our students up or our children up for success if we do that, in my opinion.
So let me clarify just a little bit. Um, so the our teachers do have the opportunity. So if we have a student who has not submitted any work whatsoever, our teachers have that that authority in their classroom um, to, I guess, assign a zero. If they've turned in zero work and have not done any work, that would be a zero. But the purpose of the fifty to one hundred grading scale is to really minimize the impact of a zero on a student's grade. So as of right now, you know, for for an A, an A would have ten points on on the grading scale. Uh, a B has the same, a C has the same, a D has the same. You look at an F, that gives you sixty, sixty points. That's that's too many opportunities to fail. And so it's really um our attempt at creating um a a grading practice or a grading scale that will be uh just fair and consistent across for for all students and to minimize that zero.
Balanced scale, as it were, so that there's the same percentage between each of the grade designations.
Yeah, yeah, you could look at it also as if it was a zero, a zero to fifty scale.
Yes.
Right, so is, right, a zero is a zero and a fifty is is
Is the top.
Kind of, I I get what you're saying, but it really just, yeah, it depends on how you, how you, it's not necessarily fifty percent. It's that, if you get a fifty in a class, I mean, that's an F.
That's still an F.
It's not like you're pa- you're passing.
Correct, but if I get a fifty on a test that I just refuse to take, um, and then my other scores, I mean, I I'm still going to have other tests there that could build it up to a a D or C or something, but I mean, I I again, I just see, again, if I don't turn something in tomorrow, I mean, that's, my boss isn't going to look at what I've, what else I've done. Oh, he's, he's done other things, he's done, he's submitted other briefs. So we'll just let this one slide. That, that is concerning to me.
Mrs. Donner?
I love that example and I'd actually like to challenge it in that if you didn't submit something at work, you might get a conversation or a coaching conversation, but the likelihood is that you wouldn't get fired. Right, that there is a, there is a coaching that we do and I think as I was reading the research around it, because I came from a, right, it's kind of probably same timeframe of education where you got zeros and all that, I think, um, when I started to think about like, what are we here to do, right, and we are here to teach kids progression and to keep going. And so if a child is only, is going to get a zero and there's no way to recover from that, it's the same way at work. If someone messed something up at work, right, you wouldn't go to fire them and make them never, like, that's it, you don't get to work, right? You have that coaching conversation with the person of, okay, like, why did you miss this brief? What happened with the deadline? Was there some, were there some extenuating circumstances and you have that conversation? And so I think this is actually reflecting what happens kind of in the real world. And to your point, right, if you keep not submitting briefs, well, yes, then that zero becomes an, you know, an F or becomes a zero that you can't recover from, it becomes being fired. But I think giving our children the opportunity to have a growth mindset and to investigate the why did you miss this or why are you not trying or why? And and when you, I think to me, if we get that child excited, right, and maybe they start out with fifties, but now towards the end of the semester, right, the teacher has ignited them, they figured out what's wrong and now they're cooking towards the end, right? You can then recover that or you don't have teachers saying, well, okay, I'm going to just throw out the first two grades from the beginning and we're going to take it from here. I think it gives that child that ability to recover. The same way at work, we give people the opportunity to recover. So that's just another way that I've thought about it.
And I understand that completely, but there, I can guarantee you there are times if I don't turn in something that very likely I could be fired. I mean, and and it's not me, any employee. Um, uh, but I would hope that as opposed to getting the zero, um, the student would, and again, this is a life learning lesson. The student would go to the teacher and say, hey, look, yeah, I'm, I wasn't here last Friday, I was sick. Or whatever the case might be, I didn't, I wasn't prepared, so I didn't come into school. Can I take, retake the test now? I mean, that would be something I could understand a little bit better as opposed to just the student not doing anything, not come, going to the teacher and asking to make this up, make up the homework, make up the the test or or whatever. If the student just shows no interest at all, I don't see how rewarding them with fifty percent uh, is going, is doing any benefit for the student.
But if the student is demotivated, right, so if you have a fifty or greater, you have the opportunity to motivate a student. If you are just getting zero, 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 now there is no incentive for me as a student because there's mathematically, right, I can never recover from that. And I think, even though we were talking and I took us down the fired route, but we don't fire our students, right? Like, our job is to try to lift them up and educate them as much as we can and keep them engaged. And so I think having a, I think it's a, again, me, it's a mind shift for me. But I think having a grading system that is um, like, great. You got, you know, seventy-five percent of this right. Last week, you got sixty percent of this right, like, we are showing progress and and we can get you to go further versus, well, you only got a seventy-five and now you got it, like, I think we want to build our students up as opposed to like having these harsh punishments.
Right, if you got a, I think, if I may, for a minute. I think it's depends on um whether we're looking at, are are you look, I had the initial react, same initial reaction and because I think that's how we all came up, like, well, you can't just, there's a difference between doing zero percent of the work and doing fifty percent of the work, right? There's a, so I don't think that this, this scale is measuring the percentage of work that was done. It's an assessment of how much is, has been learned. Um, not necessarily how much was turned in or how many assignments were done. So if you have a zero, if you have one zero and you, and get it, say, you you do motivate and you get a seventy-five, you can't, you can't, that's what we're trying to say. You can't recover from that zero, even though anywhere between zero and fifty is failing. So, uh, anyway, this is Hundley and then Mr. Mr. Riffle.
I like the concept of also the alternative grading system through portfolios and things. So, because I have, my child um would have always, well, I have a, have one child that struggled academically, could not pass a test, but if she could do it with projects or something, and so she would get great, like, she knew the information, she just could not pass the test, so she would get a twenty, a thirty. But she was able to show what she knew through the alternative method. So in that sense, you know, she would have been failing, but she knew the information. It's just, we weren't getting it out the right way. So I like that piece of it also. And giving them an opportunity, uh, when she had a seventy, then saying, going to the teacher and saying, you know, I really want to get a B, what kinds of things can I do to show that I know this information? And they work with her to do that, so she was motivated. So um, sometimes as some kids have learning things that are keeping them from getting higher grades and it's, it's not always their fault.
Mr. Riffle, you were next, I think.
Yeah, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I also similarly, I I did get zeros, I mean, I was a still thing when I was in school. And I, I'm, to somebody, I think this is a low hanging fruit when it comes to kind of how we kind of get to the part of Ms. Monpoint is saying is like, we need to eliminate factors that create inequity in this type of system. Um, I think zeros, um, as well as they do occur, they are actually kind of on the outlier of most opportunities for our students. And we actually know most of the actors in which these will occur, um, because we have systems that are created, that have been created to kind of help our students. We know who the students are, it's not, we, as the board do now, but our educators do. Um, and so I think they're inaccurate in their abilities, like, every student, I I can say this almost complete confidence, like, our chronic absenteeism is down, or since we're in school, they are learning these topics, right? Like, given rewarding with a fifty is opportunity for them to, yes, rebound or, you know, it kind of give, I think, when I got my first zero, it was like, well, that's over, like, I ain't going to go do that again, right? Like, but it it kind of like goes the opposite, like, we actually put on the pressure of like, you have the opportunity to like, keep this ball rolling, you know? Um, because I I did fail a class in high school, like, I still felt Spanish one um, because that teacher like did not want me to redo test or, so I didn't know information, I just didn't do well and that's how it worked. Um, so I think it's like this, if fifty percent existed, I think I would be able to be the, I think, soon Mr. Hosang is talking about, I was like, I will calculate my score to study six of these vocab words to get what I need, right? But I don't think those are the students we're talking about, I think those are the students that like, who really are going to be really lazy at the end of the day, senioritis or whatever you want to talk about it. But I think that's the part is like, those things do hurt students' abilities to feel as if they can move on, succeed, like, it almost made me out of consideration of not going to college because I know there's a requirement to take Spanish and in all of our public education institutions. So, um, like they had a great Spanish two teacher, or we took Spanish with the same teacher and then took Spanish two. But, um, I did do it, but I think this is a place where we can kind of, you know, talk about this is actually student behavior and not student habits, right? Like, this is a place where we understand that, um, this isn't just occurring every time. And if it does, we know the students that there are, but this also eliminates the power of teachers over students when it comes to this thing. I think this could be used as some type of weapon towards, you know, like, behavior in class, which I actually agree that zero six still exists for honor code violations and things like that. Like, people should be deemed extreme penalties for for those type of things. But I mean, that's a place where we can talk later on, but I think like, I am, this is the part where you can kind of do a lot more good than bad. And and I had the question of Dr. Keever, I went to talk about this originally. You know, are we here to grade students or are we here to teach students, right? Like, it's it's kind of a both scenario, but at some point, like, our students have to like learning, right? They have to like doing this stuff to keep getting better grades. So it's like, at what point does that happen? Is it third grade when we're told that they're going to either hit the literacy mark and or succeed and get their wings? Or are we going to keep working with them throughout the rest of till eighth grade, riding this along, right? Like, there's a lot of work, a lot of green in between those, you know, shots, so I'm just, it's a thought that I have and I I've really wrestled with this a lot and thought about personally and asked a couple people, but asked my parents originally, I was like, how did you do this? What was your thoughts on this? And then I asked, you know, plenty of people, and in the teaching scenario, like, when they think about this, like, how much would their students be rewarded for this? Or give them opportunity to actually have a conversation, because I think a zero creates some type of vindication between like, oh, I have a zero from this lady. She doesn't really want me to learn, right, like, or he does or whatever, right? And that's not true. She doesn't really want me to learn, right, like or he does or whatever, and that's not true, I think every educator wants their students to find a way to learn the topic and then like it eventually, so. Or get through it, which in my case was Spanish, so, Madam Chair, thank you so much for indulging that, I think this is a place where we can start, but. I I'm very excited for this small point, I think our students talked about this in our student advisory committee and. I'm excited to see like kind of what comes out of this and how they can feel those pilots moving through. There's especially in English, I think that's a place where we can really see writing and things like that are really towards the structure of. How we can best implement these programs throughout our other high schools and other grades, so so thank you for taking it all on and that work you're doing and so.
Ms. Chen. Um, I'll just piggyback off that and say briefly, um, that I'm very grateful, um, to Miss Mom Point, um, and. I'm sure we all are, uh, for for this multi-year sort of work and research that you've um been invested in and leading us. Um, so just wanted to say we are grateful and I'm very excited, like on slide twelve, um, the action plan and next steps. Um, looking forward to over the next couple months, seeing the details as those action steps unfolds. Um, and particularly for, um, you know, had the opportunity to, this topic came up when. Doctor Kever was talking with students and then also Miss Mom Point with our, uh, Mister Riffle, we've, we've, this came up with our students at. Um, Student Advisory Committee and I was also um able to see it in action at our, our CAC meeting. Um, so seeing all the feedback, the enthusiasm as well as a a lot of. You know, pain points for, for parents and students, um, and, but there are a lot of great ideas out there. And so just wanted to reiterate that, um, I think this is moving in the right direction. Um, I'm glad that we are going to make some significant changes. Um, I would be most curious when we dive into the specifics to see sort of across grade bands. I think we have, this presentation lays out sort of a great general overview and a direction for where we need to go, but um. In terms of just really getting down to how it's going to work. Because grading is very different, as we all know, across the purpose of grading. And then even within grade bands, you know, subject matter and things like that, but, um, and looking at, I know in like feedback. From elementary to middle, I know in general middle school, teachers may feel like. Their grading practice in elementary school that may or may not, like what is working, what's not working, you know, that's what I would be curious and then. Um, to see data as well as like qualitatively sort of from as we move students along. Because ultimately, right, it has to be connected to achievement as well as giving students the opportunity and motivation to learn, so. Like I'm, I'm interested in sort of how that can work together in in our future presentations. Um, and then another thing is, I've heard a lot of high school families. And and I will lump myself into that as well, that the grading practices in high school, there are concerns or or just not sure. Whether that is preparing students for beyond, um, and I don't know how we would necessarily measure or get data for that. But somehow our our graduates that graduate from us and go through K twelve and W J C C, do they feel? Like they're prepared for whatever pathway, you know, is is. Is the way that we assess and and grading, preparing them and helping them build those skills, so I think those are all sort of related.
Uh, just, I'm just a one quick comment, um, I was reading the purpose of grading and it's to clearly and consistently, clearly. And consistently communicate students' level of academic achievement, so if somebody comes, if we go to fifty to a hundred, when you're walking out of the door the first time, are you already at a fifty? You haven't learned a thing?
Yeah, I think you're already at a hundred. Start off with a hundred.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Uh, as a high school principal, when I would meet with freshmen at the beginning of the school year, I would say every single one of you has a four point O. Because at that point, you have not necessarily earned a credit or earned a grade, it's it's your responsibility, if so desire. To maintain that level of academic performance and what's interesting to me about this conversation. Within and among the board members is if I were to separately talk with each of you and say, tell me what you think the purpose of grading is. I feel like I might get seven different responses and that's why grading conversations are so difficult. To have within school divisions, because each of us brings to the table, uh, a different perspective. Perhaps how we were graded, perhaps how we graded if we were in a classroom as a teacher, uh, maybe how we wish we were graded. And I think that what has been interesting for me, listening to even this evening's conversation, is that we, I I feel like we're in some different places. Which is helpful, because as we continue to have the conversation and dialogue with teachers around. Grading practices and consistency and what kind of feedback are we providing and what is the purpose and meaning of grades. It's going to take a collective commitment from all of us to to work on it together, uh, and I think that's, uh, so to your. I I don't think we wanna look at students from the deficit perspective where they're walking in the doors fifties. I think we're looking at students from the perspective that they're walking in, bringing with them every skill and gift that they have. And it's our job to help them put those skills and gifts to work and demonstrate their mastery.
That didn't answer my question, but very eloquent, so.
Well, help me understand exactly what your question was.
My question is, I mean, if I haven't even opened the book, I have no knowledge, how can I be at a hundred?
Right.
I think it's a different, he's, there's a different philosophy, right, so like you're walking in with a philosophy of fifty, if you, and I think this is where I think from a board. We need more education on the actual research that is in education now, cause we're all doing this based on our. When we went to high school or college and, right, like medicine, what you learned in medical school has evolved. And so the same way, I think for us to base our decisions on what our experiences were when we went to school. We have dated information and so getting education about, like, here are the policy papers. That are in one place or the other to be educated, school board members to understand how thoughts and education have evolved. To bring us along with what's modern, cause I think if we don't do that and we don't, the same way, I know you must read medical papers to keep up. We need to read academic papers on education so that we can keep up on what is the latest trend and not slow down our district based on, you know, what we've learned in. In the eighties or what we went through in the eighties or nineties.
So universal fifty to a hundred, is that gonna be what it's gonna be for the future?
Not, I'm not sure we're suggesting that that's what it's going to be for the future, I think that as as a. College student, I was graded on a four point scale. So we're looking at twenty-five point bands in essence, right, so zero to one, one to two, two to three, three to four, four being the top score that you could receive. What the system that we have right now in place in our school division is a hundred point scale. With ten point delineations through A and D, but when you get down to F, it's a sixty point delineation. So if we were to bring forward organizationally, the idea of we're gonna go with a four point scale, that might in and of itself. There there are some students that might get a point five or a one point two, that wouldn't necessarily be passing. But it it it's it's a way of looking at how do we assess student work? Are students able to demonstrate their level of mastery to a degree that we want them to?
So I have a question to that. We have a, we have a one hundred point scale and we're saying that, you know, basically zero to fifty is all the same, but is it really because if you, is it always? I mean, what if you got a twenty, right, or a thirty, if you were, if if we're really using a hundred point scale to grade. Presumably, someone might fall, might might get a a forty, and then that's not impossible to make up, you get, you know. Couple eighties or nineties and you're, you're gonna be up over the the fifty point again, so are we? Is it really true that there's never anything between zero and fifty, the, and and? If we, if we say we're grading on a one hundred point scale.
Well, I think that that we, we have a hundred point scale model and so you could. At least at the high school level, earn a twenty-five or thirty or thirty-five. I think what is happening at the middle school level right now is that we've said the floor is a fifty.
So you're just, you're just modifying the, the grading scale to use a different, you're just not using a one hundred point scale anymore.
At the middle school level, I think that's the case, it becomes a a fifty, a fifty point scale with ten points.
Right, where fifty is essentially a zero, we're just calling it a fifty.
Clearly, the clarity is, at least in my mind, isn't there, so just reading off this slide here, it's not clear to me. I agree with, with Sarah, I mean, if you say I'm fifty, that's basically zero.
One fifty to zero, fifty to, one to fifty to a hundred, yeah, but.
Right, so I think that, I think part of the the challenge is. Wh- what is it that we want the grade to communicate and for whom is that grade designed to communicate something? And so I, I think some of us have different perceptions of what that grade ought to communicate. And some of us think grades are for parents. Some of us think grades are for sorting and selecting and some of us might believe that grades are to give students an indication. Of how they're doing relative to the material and learning things, and so even for whom the grade is designed to communicate something, I think is. An important part of this conversation, there are two really, I think succinct but well-written documents that I tried to provide for the board in terms of. Grading practices and what what is grading all about, I would encourage. A review of those and let's continue to have conversation around what those grading practices for our division look like as we seek. To provide a more consistent system, so from my perspective as superintendent. The idea that you could be, uh, that three students could be in three classrooms next door to each other in the same subject area at the same time. And have different grading practices in each three of those classrooms, to me is not something that we ought to aspire towards. We need to look towards consistency within our practices by content and grade level. That, that would be an ultimate goal that I would have when we start talking about grading practices and I I don't believe we are there right now.
Madam Chair.
One second, Mrs. Donner, did, I'll pass. Mister Riffle.
I would just say to the members, maybe we could talk about other things on these slides besides that grading scale, cause this is about the review of what, I think, what is grading. Oh, good morning, um, and I just, I just wanna get back to, I I know we can suck on the other room, talk about scales and grades, but. Miss Mob Point did a lot of work on this to kind of talk about other sections of this and I wanna get to the part like, what are we talking about when it comes to. Um, piling new practices and it's like classrooms, right, like, wh- where are we going with this stuff, is there any implementations or ideas, I just wanna get stuck on something and then. All we talked about was grading when they had three slides of action plans and next steps, so, that's one bullet point, it's great, you know, but this is gonna kill the bill, I promise you, so.
Um, I I will share that, um, the same kind of conversation we're having today, imagine having that, having that conversation with seventy-two, um. Um, teachers, administrators, um, and so we really had to start from the ground level. For these conversations with the reading, uh, the research and having dialogue, a lot of it to come to some common. Um, definitions of grading, uh, what that should look like for students, um, but what what do we look like right now is we wanna go. Um, get to a place where we um have consistent practices, um, there are so many different ways we could go with grading, but we wanted to. Um, really take our time with implementation, um, and so our first goal was consistency in grading practices and so that's looking at our categories and our weights. Um, right now in secondary, um, schools, um, right now elementary schools, they're kind of ahead of us in that, in in that area where they have consistent grading weights and categories. And secondary, we're not there, um, so that's our goal for the upcoming year, um, we are coordinators and our teachers have worked on. Um, common uh grading weights and categories, minimum number of grades in classrooms, and so that's what we are working towards implementing. Um, in this upcoming year, um, continuing with our pilots, um, in our, in our classrooms, trying to see if we can have more pilots on standards-based grading or ungrading. Just to see what those practices look like, um, being implemented in classrooms, uh, but for next year. Our goal is consistent grading weights and categories across all secondary schools and then also have a third year with our work groups to to continue the conversation.
Alright, and this is exactly what our students had talked about, they just want consistency to begin with, they don't wanna talk about the other parts, like, as much as we wanna yip and yap about fifty point scales, it's like, they want just to. Go into English and their friend in another English class feels the same if their grades can feel comparable to an extent, or their, you know, their parents or whatever. Alright, so, and that's where I am as a board member, I, I'll talk about this maybe two years down the line or whatever when we have to, but I wanna see that first and I appreciate that work, Miss Mop Point.
So I, I agree that consistency is, is important and there's a lot in this and this, but this is an extremely important topic. And so I don't think it's appropriate to shut down a conversation and say it's not worth having because this is. The the very fact that seven of us maybe come from different places and have different perspectives, the public is saying the exact same things, okay, so. That there, people, we don't wanna lower standards, I think we're worried about lowering standards, no one on this board wants to lower standards, so. That's, that's just established and I think that the way the public perceives. What we're saying and trying to do and and suggesting is going to be as varied as as the pers- you know, what we've said here today, so I think it's important that we have this. Conversation and it's important that all these different viewpoints get expressed because that's what our work session is for, um, Mister Hossing, did you have a comment?
And I agree, I I mean, I would love to have consistency through the schools, through the teachers. But just as Doctor Kever just said, if he talked with all seven of us on an issue, he's gonna get seven different answers, he's gonna get seven different perspectives. Um, so. When I was in high school, a few years ago, um, we had two English teachers and we knew that if we got the one English teacher. We were all gonna get As and if we knew if we got the other English teacher, she was gonna make us work our. She was, she was gonna make us work and it was gonna be very difficult to get a a good grade in her class, but that's just. They're different personalities, I mean, we can't, I don't wanna take that away from the teachers, I don't wanna take away, uh, from the teachers. What they wanna do and how they wanna do it, I I agree, we need to have some type of consistency, I I, there's, needs to be something there. Um, just so that a. In my English classes, so one person didn't get an A when they didn't do anything and and I'm getting a B when I'm working hard in the other, uh, uh, class. But we, I don't wanna take away from the teachers a lot, so, I mean, that's, that's what, I mean, and and I'm not saying that's what we're doing, um, and and again, I. I I would not wanna be in your shoes and trying to to do this, so thank you very much for everything, but I don't wanna take away from the teachers and and their creativity and what they. Um, are trying to do.
So, and this is not something that we are voting on. This is a conver- so this is an ongoing conversation and the only way that we, that the seven of us and and the public will. Learn and get on to the same page and and work out what is the best thing for a school division is to have this kind of discussion and to. Get it all out there, um, I, I, so I, I do appreciate all the work, I can't imagine trying to get seventy-two. And and the fact is. That grades do mean different things to different stakeholders, they're not, they do mean one thing to a student, they do mean another thing to parent, they mean another thing to teachers. Cause in some ways it's reflecting on the teacher, they mean another thing to colleges, if that's where, if that's the path you're pursuing. They mean something to, um, the school system for accreditation and how we present ourselves, so they, grades are are multifaceted. No matter what skill you use, um, and so having one of those facets be. A motivation for a student and a true assessment of, of, um, an accumulation, a growth versus. Just a a stamp that's on your head with a, a value based on a a, a number, um, that's one facet of grades that is being considered, so. So I think we will probably con- continue this, this conversation and, um, I think it's, it's a great discussion and I think it's. One of the most important things we can, we can do as a school division, cause it's so important to everyone, every stakeholder. Um, so, are there, um, are there questions on the, on the presentation, Mister Riffle?
Yes, um, I think if you wanna continue this conversation and moving forward, we need to have academic kind of background for the board. We we didn't preferences at all with anyone's professional understanding, no, no one here is an educator besides Miss Hunley, right, like, and even then, Miss Chen, she could correct them. Um, but I think there's, there's a point at which, like, we're all kind of starting off where, you know, doctoral level to bachelor's degree, right, like. They're not the same and I think it's like the hard place to be like, this is what's deserved to our students, like, that's not true either, like, we don't have a student telling us how it feels and. We did hear exactly what they wanted, which is consistency and, you know, and that's where I am, like, on this, I can talk all day about my thoughts and feelings, but. You know, this is the reality of which policy is created, so I need to start where it's beginning, which is, this is fifty years of research points of this, right, or. And we didn't have that to begin with, so, you know, I, and I don't mean to shut the conversation down, Madam Chair, it's not my intention, I just think. We've all said the same thing, we kind of were circular motioning about one thing we're not even gonna do this year, right, like, we're not looking at fifty point scale, we're looking at consistency, we're looking at. These piloting programs and that's what we had told our students, like, they weren't gonna, and for us to have, make a headline saying, we talked about this for twenty-five minutes, was my concern when we had that. I'm not saying we should, but none of us know why fifty-point scale to hundred-point scale is better, right? We didn't have a beginning of preference of those things, so when we do this conversation next time, I would like to have, or could it be possible, uh, as a question, to have academics starting this point, like introduction to this, so we can be like, well, based off this, like, let's have our discussion, right? And I think, I'm sure that's how you've kind of presented it to our seventy-two lovely participants, and we decided to just kinda get the, the background of how that went, so. And that's what I, I'd, I'd want if we come back to this, uh, on those topics, but even after implementation, like how it feels for like the data of like how students perform that, that class we piloted to the next year, right? Like, it'd be great to have some points to talk about there, ungrading to those type of things that we had at Lafayette, and so that's slide seven, or, so just thank you, Ms. Mobley.
Alright. Very much. Thank you, I know that's, it's been a ton of work and it's still ongoing, so thank you very much. Alright, this is where we take another five-minute break so that we can, um, bring in our next guests who will be joining us, uh, virtually. Our second brief recess, and, um, we will address item six point zero two. Very fun topic of redistricting.
Madam Chair, thank you. Our school division, as we begin the process of constructing two pre-k centers, uh, recognizes fully that there will be additional elementary school capacity that is available to us as we consolidate from five sites into two sites. As, as a result of that, we have contracted with MGT to help us through the redistricting process. I think this is the first of a number of different conversations the board will need to be engaged with and involved with. And redistricting, uh, not unlike the conversation with respect to grading that we just had, is one that brings with it some nuance and the need for us to work in the collective good of the division. So Ms. Wall has been working directly with the company and I'll turn it over to Kara to get the presentation started.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Um, our preliminary work for discussing the redistricting timeline and pulling data has begun with MGT and we're excited to bring the conversation to the school board this evening. Joining us tonight are Lance Richards, a director with MGT, and the person who'll be leading our community engagement efforts. Marcy Horner, project manager, and Jasmine Lewis, GIS analyst. And so I'll turn things right over to Dr. Richards.
I'll start with unmuting my mic, which, you know, is a win to start this process. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dr. Lance Richards and as a, I'm a former school superintendent, so I've listened into your work session and I can say that there, there are certain elements of my superintendency I miss, and I've enjoyed your conversations around uh, all the, your staffing and your transportation issues. Those, those bring back, uh, fond memories from, from my times as superintendent. Let's jump right in to, to honor your time here, um. Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
How about that?
Yes, sir, it's good.
Are we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, so, um, just jumping right in, well, I say that, advance the slide. So, just some, some, some broad, uh, strokes here in terms of our intentions. We wanna introduce ourselves, obviously, and then inform the board on data background and just kind of introduce the guiding principles for this process. You know, as your superintendent chaired, this is the beginning. If this were monopoly, monopoly, this would be go, and so this is where we are to start this process and move forward. For, for, for tonight's purposes, we're gonna talk a little bit about the data that we're gonna be connect, collecting, data one oh one. Review the guiding, uh, principles kind of in an overview, so you can begin that discussion around guiding principles going forward with your division. So our company, our company was founded actually fifty years ago by educators. Uh, we work across the nation, nationally recognized, locally focused. The folks that you see on this screen have a hundred years combined with our team in terms of demographic analysis, uh, well over a hundred and fifty. That number's really, uh, far beyond that, thousands of forecasts and reports and master planning projects. So, uh, we've got a pretty deep bench and we, we are here, we are, basically, we're school people here to work with school people and help you find solutions. So just in terms of our review and framework and timeline, you know, we, we, we started our conversations late March, early April, and that was kind of our initiation. Where we, we began some of our preliminary data gathering, began to kind of understand the, the challenges and the things that are going on within your division. And here we are, the board kickoff, helping you define guiding principles and enrollment patterns. And this, this enroll, this initiation and preparation is, is very important to our process, you know, there's, if a woodsman was asked to cut a tree in five minutes, he would spend his first three minutes sharpening his blade. And so the initiation and preparation is really our time, our, our opportunity to sharpen our blade to make sure that our process goes smoothly going forward. So in that preparation, we're gonna analyze data, we're gonna calculate all the different factors, and we're gonna talk about those factors coming up. Create your forecast, review your capacity and utilization, and help us understand the challenges for your division going forward. Into December and Janu- and into, into December, into the late winter and through the, into early fall of next year, we're gonna be talking about bound, boundary oper- options. You know, iterative scenarios. I, I enjoyed the fact that during your grading discussion, you used the word iterative. Well, iterative is your word of the day, is, is cycles of refinement and improvement to get things to a desired outcome. So this, you've heard of iterations, we're gonna bounce ideas back and forth, sharpening our blade, as it were, to make sure that we're bringing forward the scenarios that are, that create actionable processes for your school division. Of course, we're gonna do community forums, collect community feedback, that's a big part of why I'm on this call. Um, we're heavy into community feedback, making sure that this process is transparent. Having these conversations with school boards, meeting with school boards in persons and, and presenting that information. But making sure that your community understands the challenges, all of the data that we're gonna have will be shared. It will be an open book of transparency, making sure that everyone within your school community can provide their feedback on this process going forward as we revise, revise those, uh, and refine those boundary options. And again, you've talked a little bit earlier about your, your, uh, your pre-k opening, your pre-k buildings, that has to be very exciting for you as a school community. I remember those days of new buildings and renovations. With that opening, though, in the fall, I believe, of, uh, uh, fall of twenty-seven, we're gonna be working on final options for you well in advance of that in terms of October into the fall of twenty twenty-six, so that you have a plan going forward. I, I applaud you for taking us on at this time. You've given yourself a long enough runway that you can make a considered uh, decision going forward that's best for your entire school community. So this framework, and, and you can kind of start in the upper right-hand corner there and work your way around, again, transparent, standard data sources, frequent updates. It's very collaborative, this is a partnership. We're not doing something to you or for you, we're doing this with you. And so you're gonna have regular check-ins and a lot of conversations, uh, uh, around those, in, uh, in terms of online surveys and community forums as well. Again, iterative, bouncing those ideas back and forth to refine and improve. And they're very informative. We wanna make sure that not only that the board and district leadership understands, but that your communities understand. I, I call it the elevator speech. We want people to be able to explain the who, what, when, where, how, and why of this so that they can share this information back out into their communities. And of course, it's gonna be data-driven. We don't know where this is gonna lead, we have no idea at this point. Again, we're just beginning to collect that information, just beginning to review some of that and making sure that what we have is accurate. So we're gonna be doing some modeling, but we're gonna integrate this, all this into that forecast. So data one-on-one, what are we gonna be looking for? Well, spatial and tabular data is just a, a fancy way of looking at maps, creating charts, Excel sheets, tabs, that kind of thing, so you can review and revise your data and bring, and bringing that forward. And we'll talk more about that in just a second. Of course, we'll re- research all of the active proposed and future residential development, cause those can help support your buildings in terms of demographics and enrollment. We'll analyze future demographic dynamics in terms of, uh, birth rates and all those factors that come into play as you're looking at the demographics of your students in your attendance areas, and of course, we'll be developing those population forecasts, uh, going forward. So, I liken, I used to call this sausage making, but I, I, now I use the term cake baking. Where these are all the ingredients that are gonna go into our cake, and we talked a little bit about that in terms of your data projections. And you wanna make sure that, again, all of the inputs are accurate, so that our forecasting can be as accurate as possible. So we're gonna take a look at historical birth rates, we're gonna look at all the birth factors that come into play, and again, how many of those kids? If they're born today, how many of them show up for you in, in kindergarten five years from now, six years from now? So looking at your, just your kindergarten class, that's kind of the first leg of that. We're gonna look at mobility factors, how many come in, how many go out? And we'll have a chart to represent that, so that, as you well know, especially in terms of residence and development, if you have a development that comes online, the, that kindergarten class can grow as it matriculates its way through your elementary schools into middle and into high. So what are those mobility factors in terms of your community? And then student yield factors deal with that residential development. Where are the homes? How many kids would we anticipate generating? You know, a single-family home generates more children than, say, a single, uh, room apartment. Um, a town home is a different factor than a, than a single home or a multi-family dwelling. So all of those things come in, all of this flower, it's kind of like flower, my grandmother used to have a flower sifter, where you kinda churned it and you sifted the flower coming into the cake. All of that is kind of sifted down into those student forecasts. So thinking spatially, again, we're gonna verify data, this, it may be hard to read on your screen, but that is basically schools, the grade, individual grades, the number of students within those grades, making sure that we know where the students are, where they reside, and what school they attend. So all that information is going back and forth for that data verification. Then we're gonna plot our students. We're working with residential students, we're gonna plot our students, and every student gets a, a dot. And some of those dots are multi-layered, because you got siblings within that house, but we're gonna, we're gonna locate every student so that we can go out and create these study areas. And those study areas can range in size, but just think of them in terms of plus or minus fifty students, these blocks of students. And these study areas are, are based on, you know, logical geographic points, roads, you know, uh, roads and streams and, um, trantracts, for example. Anything that we can do to provide a logical sequence in terms of providing those study areas. Uh, and then, again, referring back to, this is just a, a, a chart that deals with birth rates, the total births, the number of students that show up into kindergarten, and then your capture rate. And what we're seeing by and large, to be honest with you, is a kind of a slight decline in birth rates in many areas. So it will be very interesting to kind of explore what's going on in your school community and kind of see, as, as data nerds, kind of get into the information and see, you know, how many live births do you have, what's your capture rate, how many of those kids are showing up for you in kindergarten? And then, again, we talked about mobility factors, so in this chart, if you can, if you just look at school one, the blue represents a slight growth, yellow represents a decline, and then if it's, if it's a white block, then it's kind of a push, it's uneven. So, for example, in the very first school there, school one, So for example, in the very first school there, school one, at kindergarten to one, if you add a hundred students, that means you had a hundred and three that showed up for first grade. And as you, if you make your way across there, you can kind of see those mobility factors as they come into play. And again, we'll chart this for your entire division. And then we will take a look at your development and student yield factors. Um, it, it varies from, uh, from district or division, division, school communities. But you'll see single family, single family attached apartments, all of these units will bring in. And we'll determine a factor for those in terms of how many students you can anticipate in a given area. You know, it's very hard for schools to build out in front of development. Many times, schools have to be reactive to that development. But in forecasting, you want to make sure that you forecast that potential growth. So you're not revisiting this or seeing challenges five years from now. And, oh, and some, and we'll be on the ground taking a look at that as well. So we will also then validate capacity and utilization and, and I have in the block there, capacity is a choice. Your schools and their capacity are driven by the programs that you're going to offer. So I, you know, for example, I heard you mention earlier in the, in the, the, uh, uh, in your work session about, uh, someone mentioned going through the music programs and a combined jazz. If you're, you're going to have a jazz program, that, we're going to have to have space. So if you're setting aside space, you're going to have to factor that into your utilization. If you're bringing in math interventionist or literacy coaches and you're bringing them into your facility, they're going to have to have real estate and square footage. And so these programs that you bring in, expanded CTE and STEM labs, or I think you guys, uh, some areas call those sci-tech. Um, those areas also have to be factored in to, to determine utilization capacities. So we'll take a look at that. And then we'll develop this, this utilization spatially. So this is just a color sampling, of course, uh, not from your division. But you can see based on this color charting, it's very important to us, you're going to have a lot of charts, a lot of graphs, a lot of visuals. Because those becomes, become the pictures that you can explain. Those become those references for the elevator speech. But we'll, we'll chart all of this out so that you can readily, uh, reference that in terms of our planning going forward. And then we will create student forecasts. And so you'll see as we'll have a historic, a look back, and you can see, kind of see in this chart, the current and then a, a ten-year going forward. And, and the, the red to green just kind of signifies, uh, lower to higher. So in this modeling, what you're seeing is, is there are higher cohort of students in the upper grades, in that grades, you know, seven through twelve. And so what that tells you in these forecasting is, is you're overall seeing, and, and what you see across the very bottom of that chart. Is a, is a, is a slow decline in the forecast going forward. So, in, in looking at your division, here are your current, uh, elementary attendance areas. I don't think there's going to be any surprises here. You do have some split zones, some island zones, um, as you look forward. Uh, if you look at, um, I believe Montague there, uh, you can see some, some split outs there as well as, uh, Clareburg Baker. So in looking at these, you can kind of see your attendance areas. And I believe that's part of our discussion and why we're here tonight. And then if you look at that, here's your feeder school. So you've still got your elementary zones here, but the yellow lines are representative of your middle school, elementary and middle school, uh, feeder patterns. And then again, this is middle, now you've got your middle and middle into high in terms of those feeder patterns. And then your high school attendance areas, uh, with a split on Jamestown. And a little bit into some, uh, uh, some island zones here with Lafayette and Warren. So, guiding principles. So we've seen your zones, we've seen some of the, you can, you know, represent some of the challenges that are there. You've got these new buildings that are going to be coming online, how do those parts fit into your puzzle? So, and looking at your boundary review criteria, we call those guiding principles. So these principles help guide the process, they provide kind of a measure of, of effectiveness against one another. Uh, they give context to the decisions so people understand how or why you got to this certain point. And they allow your community to understand that process. And they also provide a tool for board and leadership to explore with some flexibility in terms of, if, if one doesn't, that iterative process. If one doesn't work, what might work as you, as these things bounce off of one another? I think it's critical, this last bulleted point here is, is as important as anything else in this process. It's, it's important to understand what doesn't work. So that you can create a path forward that will create an actionable process for you. So, guiding principle. It's, you'll notice the bullet there that says criteria may conflict with one another. That could be all four of those bullets because these things pull against one another. You really can't stack them one, two, three, four, five, because they begin to pull another, against one another. So you're looking, you're talking about transportation, but you know, I, in, in moving schools and, and adjusting things, you wanted to try to figure out a way to, you know, you had a conversation about bus drivers. I, I still have my CDL, so if I show up on town and we're in a jam, I can drive the yellow limousine. Uh, everywhere I go needs bus drivers, which, and it costs a lot of money to run a bus. Three years ago, when I was superintendent, it was about seven or eight dollars a mile. So you have to look at that going forward in terms of your transportation costs. It's always great to minimize impact as much as you can, everyone, it matches on to that. But you all want to, also want to make sure that you're not revisiting this process in another three to five years. You, balancing utilization versus neighborhood schools. And then of course, balancing demographics in terms of students in need and those types of things. All of those things lend into the guiding principles. And we're going to break these down even further for you in just a moment. But again, I, I want to stress, these guiding principles will pull against one another. For one school, it may work great for balancing utilization, but it impacts more students. For another school, you've been able to kind of create neighborhood cohesion, but you've not been able to do that in the other school. Because of either utilization or, uh, uh, demographics. So all of these things can play in conflict to one another. So, complexity, balancing utilization, you know, you can see benefits and you can see challenges. You know, you end up with the balanced classes, but you might have imbalanced socioeconomic factors. And, and transportation always comes into play. If you balance demographics, you can be, you can make equitable resources, but you may have uneven utilization. And you may also have a situation where they can't attend to school closest to them, driving up your, again, your transportation costs. And, and you can end up with some island zones and trying to make sure you balance those demographics. And as I've shared before, it's always, everyone jumps into minimizing impact, moving as few students as possible. But it may have little impact if you don't kind of swing for the fences and make sure that you're approaching this in a holistic, equitable, equitable fashion for the entire division. And you want to make sure that you, that, that you don't make a change today. And then two years from now have to make an additional change that impacts some students twice. So, kind of here's where we are, guiding principle examples. So these are the things that you division are going to be kind of source, sussing out as we move forward in this process. Looking at utilization across a five and a ten-year forecast, uh, trend. And we, we talk about picking an item out of each of these, uh, these areas. Demographics, district-wide perspectives versus minimizing disruptions. Neighborhood schools, uh, maintaining those neighborhood schools and avoiding island zones. Transportation, of course, we've talked about proximity, uh, walkability, uh, limited amount of times that you can require a student to be on a bus. And of course, minimizing impact, minimizing the number of students impacted by these adjustments while trying to maintain your feeder systems. So there's a lot there to process and think about. Uh, and I'm sure, you know, based on your earlier discussions, these are things that you as a board and you as a school community are want to kind of, going to want to try and work through. So, next steps, again, iterative process. Here we are at the beginning, initial scenarios using guiding principles and student forecasts. We'll get, we'll, we'll have meter, meetings and feedback from district leadership to kind of work through some of that. You'll be given a, you know, a couple, several touch points. We have two touch points here for district leadership, but those are weekly or bi-weekly touch points in terms of providing information. Making sure that our information's accurate and, and bringing that forward and showcasing it and, and sharing it with you. Of course, all that will be brought back around for board input. As we lean, go forward then for community input and forums, we'll use the community input. It's important, I think it's always important to stress to your community that no decisions, we have no presupposed outcome here. No decisions have been made, even after that initial board input, no decisions have been made. We'll bring information forward to the community. Everyone in the community will be able to participate in this process. If they come to the, to the community meetings, we'll have live polling in there. It's just like who wants to be a millionaire in, uh, uh, polling the audience. And they'll also be able to present, if they can't be in person, they can participate in our online forums. And we've got other options and, and discussions we've had with district leadership in terms of going to where the community is, making sure we gather their insights. Once we do all of that, we'll quantify that, we'll bring that back, it will be used to inform the final, uh, decision. Uh, a lot of times people are like, no, you've already got a decision made. No, absolutely not, when we roll in for community input, we don't know what the final outcome will be. We will have some options, we'll present some frameworks and scenarios perhaps, but their input will inform the final outcome. Again, we'll come back to, to, for feedback from district leadership and sharing that information with our draft recommendations. And sharing that information preliminarily with the board, and of course, then you'll have final recommendations. Again, you kind of have a long runway here and it's a very deliberative process, uh, much like that sharpening the blade. At the beginning of this, there's a lot of data gathering, there's a lot of that iterative process back and forth, uh, before we'll have something to share or reveal to anyone. Alright, oh, there we go. So thank you, I appreciate your time, I hope that I didn't go too fast, if you've got questions.
Randy.
Um, we're here to answer.
Oh, it's back, sorry, nevermind. Thank you very much, that was, uh, that's very informative. Um, board members, any questions or comments at this time? I know this is, we're just sort of dipping our toes in at this point to this big, this big task that we're going to have to undertake, but. Mrs. Donner.
So I'm curious, um, how do, in drawing out different boundaries and scenarios, like how do you take into account neighborhoods? And, and figuring out where those neighborhood boundaries are?
Or are you asking about for future, for, for our future boundary process?
Correct.
So, um, you, you might have seen the, or you might remember the slide we showed with those small, when we talked about, um, splitting the district into a really small study areas. We call them study areas. Each of these study areas is, only has, um, elementary school, a middle school and high school. So it's already what makes up, um, your current attendance areas. We'll cut those down even as, as small as possible so that when we look at manipulating, um, areas, we're able to not take, you know, not take an area with two hundred kids. But take an area with thirty to fifty students so that we can be really precise and granular when we get down to, um, trying to make decisions. And not, not, um, not making, like I said, not, not moving two hundred kids, but being able to say, okay, well, this, if, if the goal here is to balance utilization. Here's a number of students that makes sense with the, um, divisional leadership will discuss that this makes sense with transportation with anybody else that's involved in that decision-making.
I, I would, I would echo that our software, our GIS software allows us to, to drill down to the property lines that divide two homes. So we will look at major thoroughfares, we will look at, um, subdivisions, we will look at all of these markers to keep for neighborhood cohesion. So for example, if we have to draw a study area, we'll draw it through backyards, we won't, we won't be forward-facing. So that, so that the, the split or the, the, the division of these study areas is kind of, is logical. And again, it's going to be reviewed by district leadership. There are times when we draw a line, they go, you know, well, from a transportation standpoint, this is really a dead end here. These cul-de-sacs lead back to this point, these study areas have to remain connected. And so that, that's part of that iterative process.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm wondering, Madam Chair, from the board's perspective, as you looked at some of the guiding principle examples, um, and the idea that. It's recommended, I think, from the firm that we're, we're thinking about, what is a priority from the board with respect to getting this work started? So if you go back to that third to last slide that said guiding principle examples. I'm, I'm curious to hear from the board what, what your thinking is right now. So that we can continue to work with the firm on their data analysis and, and try to give them. An initial clear set of, of thoughts on, on next steps.
Uh, Mrs. Sully?
I'm definitely interested in starting now, just being out at Stonehouse at the school. And then also, I drove through and so I'm concerned about the overcrowding. And so I think the sooner we get ahead of it, the better, um.
So from, to that, to that end, which, which of these resonate most with you?
You mean of the one, two, three, four, five of those?
Well, right, the five, the five on the left, the suggestion is usually one from each category. So, uh, is it taking a district-wide perspective considering socioeconomic? Or is it minimizing disruption if we were looking at demographics? Or should we focus on neighborhood schools or avoid islands? So I, I guess what.
Maybe you could explain or give us a brief summary on how it's done right now, what, what, what it was based on currently. I know we, none of us were there, but.
That's so cool, I, I actually watched the video, it was pretty weird.
So I, I would need Mr. Snipes to wade into the waters as the historian for. Want to turn your microphone on, Marcellus? Or not?
Um, just to say this briefly, I, putting me on the spot, I, I would rather get back with the actual criteria.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't.
Because there were five, there were five things that were used and I remember like two or three.
Okay, I'm not trying to show anyone up or put anyone on the spot, I just thought it would be helpful to know what we're starting with and then to know what we want to change. But, um, go ahead, Mrs. Donner.
So are these, so this is guiding principles examples, are there others that the firm suggests or are we pulling from here? Cause they don't feel very messy. And so, like I would say, like, yes, I want mayor at school and I don't want islands. And so, like, are there, do we have to pick from these or are the, is this just a sample set? And that there's others that the firm would provide to us? Or do you just want us to pontificate?
Lance or, or team, these are, these are typically, yeah, these are typically the, the five or six areas that a firm would utilize, yes?
Yeah, the five or six areas, absolutely, within those areas, um, these are, there are examples and samples of them, of ones that have been utilized. There's always, oftentimes districts or divisions might have something that's specific to things that they want or want to see. So if there's something, you know, that, that the board or the district leadership feels strongly about, that would likely fall into one of these sections. Obviously, utilization is, you know, it's, it's a standalone, you don't see many options in that section. Um, you're going to have, you're going to have excess, uh, capacity because you have these preschool students that'll be going to the new preschool centers. So obviously, and from a demographic first standpoint, from a number standpoint, uh, that's something that always drives me initially is to do that utilization. But, uh, always within the thoughts of, you know, natural things to me would be natural boundaries. And that's why it's so great to have people in the leadership that are, um, that, that are a subject matter, as, uh, experts. Like the transportation director or somebody that might be able to say, because of this road here or this one-way street, things that I'm not aware of. Um, but, but back to the question, these are just samples. They, um, are, I mean, they're, they're tried and true. So if there, you do have a, you do have in both your elementary and your, um, high school attendance areas, you have what we consider island zones. If that's, uh, something that your community and the board and the division leadership wants to get away from, then that would be something that you would, you know, we could consider. If it's something that you prioritize more, maybe it's a demographics or maybe something than, and you don't have as much of a concern about those. Um, then that might be, not be something that you choose. So it really is going to be specific to the needs of your district and you being the subject matter or the experts in your area. Um, get to make that, it, it makes much more sense for you all to make that decision.
Well, it's almost like it's, almost like we need its layers. Uh, because utilization is of course, the whole reason we're doing this to begin with, right?
I think that's the starting point, that's right.
We, we are pulling preschool kids out of schools because we don't have enough space for, at least at elementary. So that's, that's the initial problem that the, this, we're trying to solve with this whole endeavor. Um, as well as opening up more access to, to pre-K for, for more kids. So that's obvious, that's the foundation. Um, and while we would love to minimize impact, of course, um, and it, this also depends on whether we're doing just elementary or how, how many we're doing. A lot of elementary is going to be impacted because everything has to shift. And that, so, so for, for minimizing impact might be harder to do at the elementary level than at other levels if that's what we. if that's what we choose to do, which we also have not yet decided. Um, and then I think that, I think transportation has, has been a strong concern for a long time. So, I mean, all of these are important. It's just-
Sure.
I, I feel like those are the, the layers that we have to, we almost like to have to stack it. Um, but, Mrs. Sunley?
Yeah, um, so I'm assuming they didn't do the last, any of our previous, okay? So, for someone that was here thirty years and has seen redistricting happen, what I would hope doesn't happen is, um, and I'm not sure, cause I, I like the way Mr. Snipes answered. I'd like to get back with you. And I could be a hundred percent wrong. But if, if, if you looked at maps and you came up with a plan, but then parents were not in favor of that and you kind of went with that, um, I'm trying to, when you say elevators, elevator thing, um, so-
Speech.
Speech. So, I don't want, I built my house here. So, we're not moving. We want to stay here. Do we get the, I, I want us all to be, I'm not gonna say not swayed, but, you know, I understand that, but this, these are the reasons why it has to be this way. So that we're all, cause we all represent different areas. So, we're gonna get feedback from our constituents and we need to be on the same page as what's best for the entire school division regardless of, you bought your house just for there. So, that's the thing I'm more concerned about is, um, I don't wanna go through all this and then we came up with something, but we throw it out for something else. If we can-
So, you're saying we wanna agree to cut, that we all say we're gonna base this on the-
Yes.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to establish right now, like what we're, what we're basing our decision on. Um, do you wanna just, you wanna go around the, the room real quick? And also, Mr. Snipes indicated that he had found the-
Oh, I was just saying, I think it'd be helpful if, like, if we just went guiding principle by guiding principle-
Oh, okay, I thought you meant-
And get us to just say which one of the two we're leaning towards to kind of expedite the conversation at eight o'clock. Plus retreat.
Well, okay.
If that's what you need, like, what do you need from us?
I think, I think we would like to know administratively to work with MGT initially what the guiding principles are from the perspective of the board. And so, utilization, I think, I, I would assume that we can agree that utilization is the, that's the reason that we're here.
Right.
Because we're opening two pre-K centers and there's additional elementary capacity that we need to take advantage of. So, utilization becomes primary.
Number one, yeah.
And then what are the one or two other pieces that you would like for us to focus on?
Uh, Mr. Riffel, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start. Let's get moving. Um, neighborhood schools, probably the number one thing. I think a lot of people say or they want to go to schools closest to them, right? Like, and I know it's not possible in every scenario, but I think it's the thing with kind of the word on the street. It's like when they see a bus that they know is going to Lafayette, right, from, I think about Berkeley in my district. Like, that's a concern people have is like, oh, like, this neighborhood, let's just take Kingsville, for example, is like coming across a neighborhood that's going past somewhere in Berkeley and they're going to like Jamestown. But then there's a neighborhood that's like closer to Jamestown that's in that, that going to Lafayette. It's like, there's that, that, so it's like, you know, I don't wanna see islands. Those are the two things. So, it's like maintain, I guess, maintain the neighborhoods. And I, I guess, like, if I'm choosing C, I'm not gonna choose D, but I do wanna see both, right? Like, there's a, there's a balance of the both of those things. Like, you can do both. I don't know why they're categorized out, but if I'm gonna pick it, neighborhood schools is my one demographic out of after utilization. And then, and I'm picking demographics. I wanna see, like, the makeover. Those are the three I want. Utilization, demographics, neighborhood schools. The rest is gonna come from, like, transportation will come from, like, just having neighborhood schools. Like, the bus routes will come through those things. So, I don't need to waste my time. I'm gonna pick those three categories. Like, I'll pick demographics A and then neighborhoods. I'll pick C and then utilization A. Those are my, those are my top three, so. Makes sense, everyone follow?
Yeah. Mrs. Donner, do you wanna go through, go through your?
Sure. So, um, so A, um, on, I, I think we need to just look at the, well, A is my number one or whatever. Utilization A is my one. Um, neighborhood schools, just D, avoid island zones. And then, um, transportation E. Um, and then I think for demographics, A.
I'm sure. I would like to say I'd like to maximize the impact, so I would not be minimizing my impact. I'm, I must out on earth. I, I think I'd be bold here, like, we're doing some pretty thing things. So, I didn't even include that in my discuss. So, I know I didn't answer G or H, but it's not something I'm considering at this point, so.
Yeah, I didn't put minimize impact because I think we've gotta fix it in the way that it's drawn right now. Just not making any sense. So, that's why I did not include any in G and H.
Anyone else wanna weigh in? Dr. Kavazos, do you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, I'm gonna go with the utilization A, obviously.
I need your mic. Can you speak in?
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. I, I def- obviously, the A's are for utilization. A is for demographics. Uh, I would like to maintain neighborhood schools. That's, I think would be important. Um, I like to maximize in, in that same vein, to maximize proximity to home and workability. Um, I, I, people don't wanna move if they don't have to. So, I would, I would take G.
Ms. Chen?
Um, so with the utilization, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I didn't know, there's only one choice, but I was thinking we obviously want to look at like a five to possibly ten-year plan so that we're not, just so that community can plan and also so that future boards don't have to go through this cause this is such a huge change. Um, so that would be ideal from a utilization standpoint. Um, with the demographics, I think I'm leaning toward, um, A. The socioeconomic, that choice A. And then neighborhood schools, at this point, I'm a, I'm a little bit torn. I think I'm, I'm see the benefit and I'm leaning toward maintaining the neighborhood schools. But I also really wanna avoid the island zones, cause when you look at our current redistrict, our current districts, um, the island zones, there are only a few of them and they just don't make sense. And, um, and then, um, and I think those are related with the island zones and transportation. So, uh, for transportation, I would prioritize, um, and this would be a pretty high priority for me is like the transportation impacts, trying to limit, um, the amount of time that kids are having to be on the bus. Um, and, um, I'm prepared and okay, uh, with um, a more maximum impact. Um, and I feel like that's to be expected when you're redistricting nine elementary schools and nine elementary schools that, as Ms. Hunley has pointed to in, in our division, our community is that, you know, big decisions are made based off of where families wanna go to elementary school. So, so this is, um, this is, I, and I also have mentioned this in, in other communication. It's just the, the need to, to try to get the communication out there to as many people as soon as possible about this process.
Okay. We've, you've said your piece, right?
Yeah, I do wanna talk about the feeder portion, I think.
One second.
That does come with it, though. And like, this is, I don't, I don't, I mean, the maximums impact, but like, we're just talking about elementary for this right now, right? Are we doing the full thing?
Oh, that's, that's part of the problem. Um, cause, uh, Mr. Hussein, do you wanna say what you?
Sure, um, it, it's funny. I'm looking at all these guiding principles and, and I know we're asked to select one or the other, but to me, I don't see them as mutually exclusive, a, a lot of them.
Right.
Um, let's just do neighborhood schools. Yes, I wa- I would rather have to maintain neighborhood schools. But I think at the same time, if you're having neighborhood schools, you're not gonna have those island zones at other places. Um, at least the way I'm looking at it. Um, for transportation, you're considering the transportation impacts. Um, and, and I think we, with our issues and the size of James City County and Williamsburg, um, that you, if we can limit the amount of time on a bus, yes, I think that'd be a great thing to do. But by doing that, I think we're also then maximizing the proximity of someone walking, uh, to school from their home. Um, I don't know, I understand that there may be some issues with the busy streets, someplace or rural tracks with that. But I still think if, if you're trying to consider the impact of, and keeping things where the bus routes are not long, um, you're gonna probably get a lot of students that are gonna be able to walk to, uh, walk to school. Um, and again, min- minimizing the number of students impacted by boundary adjustments, I, I'm, that may be the, the, probably the one that we're not gonna be able to do probably most of if we're, we're, we're organizing with this. Um, but I would still wanna try and keep, maintain the feeder system. I think there's, there's been, the families have been here enough or long enough where I think they like the fact that you're going from one elementary school to the middle school to the high school. Um, and if we can not disrupt that as best we can, um, I, I mean, that would be the, the best thing to do. Um, and again, that would just automatically go to that you're minimizing the number of students impacted by the boundaries. It, it, I know it's not the, an answer. I know I'm saying, yeah, let's pick everything. Um, but I don't see where these are really mutually exclusive.
Mrs. Sunley, did you already, you kinda said it.
I'm just going to echo what Ms. Chen said. Everything she said, resonate it with me. And I'm very, just I wanna do more what's best for the students and, um, not let it be just parent-driven. What's best for the students.
Okay. Me? I kind of said it already, but obviously utilization, um, well, this was why I wanted to hear from Mr. Snipes, cause I feel like this is part of the problem. Um, I, I, I would think we would, you would wanna minimize impact if you can. If you, if you have to, because the long-range planning is saying you have to, then you have to. But you don't wanna move people just for the heck of it. Um, but, uh, I, yes, utilization, um, the, the, the neighborhood schools that make sense and kids that can stay with the, with a cohort from as much as possible from elementary into middle to, to high school. And, um, maximizing our, our transportation efficiencies, which I, I feel like are the reasons we kind of went into this. Now, we're, we're, we're talking definite for elementary and, and potentially hypothetical for, for other levels of school. So, this is a tricky conversation because we're talking different goals maybe for different, different scenarios. But, um, Mr. Snipes, would you mind just telling us what it was based on last time?
Yeah, there's two different times we've redistricted. Two thousand nine with Hornsby and Blatton. There were three criteria at that time. There were proximity, diversity, and capacity. And I can forward you these, the actual memo from two thousand nine.
Clarity around diversity, you're talking about socioeconomic diversity?
Well, for two thousand nine, it was based on a free and reduced lunch ratio at each school, um, between seven point five and ten percentage points. And for twenty seventeen, it was based on the socioeconomic status, uh, the balancing the socioeconomic statics to the best extent possible. So, there were, there were three in two thousand nine, but there were five criteria in twenty seventeen when the middle schools were redistricted. Those criteria were utilization, proximity, longevity. Two additional criteria to be considered by board members were the socio- socioeconomic status and neighborhood concept.
Okay. What, alright, I don't know what longevity is now, but okay.
I will forward you the explanations.
It's five years. They're like potential, like, don't use again in five years.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's like tenants, like, typically do that over ten years.
Okay.
Well, can I add two quick things?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, two, two more things for consideration for administration and for, um, our, our experts who are helping us with this, this process. Um, one is just to reiterate, uh, I'd just like to reiterate what Mrs. Hunley said about, um, I think to be completely transparent in our community also, hopefully will be with us on this. It is very obvious that there are certain neighborhoods with a louder voice and more advocacy when it comes to where their children go to school. Um, so I'm hoping that we have this opportunity and it will be difficult. Um, but I'm hoping that, um, you know, our, our partners here can help us as well as our board can consider. We need to figure out how we can reach out to parents and families. Um, and then consider the needs of students that may not have that same advocacy, um, in the redistricting and what that means. Um, so, so I would like that to be a part of the conversation. Um, because I do feel like, and I think it's pretty clear, that, um, and I'm not, I'm, I, the, I, this is gonna be impossible, I know. Like, we're gonna have to have very difficult conversations. So, I'm not saying this as a criticism to past boards or to any neighborhoods or whatnot. Like, advocacy is great. I'm just pointing out that this is something in our community, that there's certain neighborhoods with advocacy that have swayed ways in which redistricting has been done. Um, so I think we have an opportunity here to sort of reevaluate that. And those are all valid concerns. I'm not saying that at the end of the day, that's not how decisions are made, right? Um, but I just wanna point it out at this sort of, if we're sharpening the axe, if we're taking time to do this, need to, we need to like lay it all out there. Um, and, and look at, learn from what the past, um, what's worked, what's not, and then see how that has sort of translated into reality. Um, so, so that was just something I thought of. The other thing that I'd like, um, for us to, to evaluate and look at and get some data and just some feedback on, um, so we can just be knowledgeable is related to the neighborhoods, keeping neighborhoods goals, which is, I know, a huge priority in the feeder system is in that, and this may also be related to the advocacy point I made earlier. But in that, there are certain neighborhoods that do not follow that, whose kids go to a school, make friends, don't get to go to the same school and then go to a different school. Right? So, so that is worth looking at, those groups of students that we are placing in that sort of, for better or for worse, right? It's disruptive, right? So, for, yes, for majority of students. So, it's a give and take and I understand that. But I think it's worth acknowledging and, and pointing out where the impact those students may be that are in those neighborhoods where they're, they don't get to stay together, you know?
Just as an example, when we were doing the Level Up Days and I was at Hornsby, I, I think seven or eight of the elementary schools had students attending the Level Up Days at one of our middle schools. And I think that in some ways underscores your point, Ms. Chen, around can we, can we look at determining stronger, um, more balanced feeder patterns so that there is a sense of cohort work from level to level? So, I, I, I think that's what I understood you to say. And I was, I saw the byproduct of that during Level Up Day.
Do you feel from this, that you have what you need at this point?
I think we will-
Is it clear as mud?
It's clear as mud. I think it gives us a, a place to jump off from and have some additional conversations to perhaps come back and say, this is, these are some of the things that we heard and we'll, there's still the, the data collection pieces that are occurring and study that'll occur over the, the course of the summer until we get into the fall. So, I, I think for right now, I feel pretty good about where we are. Kara?
Thank you.
Thank you to MGT. We really appreciate it and I look forward to continuing the engagement.
Absolutely. It's pleasure having us.
This was enjoyable. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Alright. Very quickly, um, we will review two policies that are, um, changing in conjunction with student code of conduct.
Yes, ma'am, that is me. Uh, first policy is policy JFC. Uh, it was last revised a year ago or just, just less than a year ago as we added information around, uh, the cell phone scenario. There's additional clarifying language added in terms of the enforceability of the code of conduct. Uh, and then, actually, that is the, that is the one revision that we're talking about in terms of where might the code of conduct be enforced. So, lines forty-one through forty-nine.
Thank you. And that's just basically breaking it out into bullets.
That's right.
So, it's easier to see it.
Correct. We had received some feedback that we, we might want to provide additional clarity around that and feel like that policy revision meets that need.
So, we're not really changing the content?
We're not.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. Alright, next.
The next one is JGD and JGE, student suspension and expulsion. In this particular revision, uh, we are- In this particular revision, uh, we are, we are indicating by policy that short-term suspensions. Is issued by an assistant principal will require a formal review by the building principal prior to review by the department of. Student services that has been um, generally an expectation, but we feel like it needs to be a policy expectation.
Any, uh, I saw Riffle and then Mr. Hoseng.
This is clarifying, this is, this is mandating that we allow, like we basically prescribe. Like you have the chance for two days to petition the suspension, like. I'm just trying, I'm trying to put myself in shoes. I don't know exactly what we're doing.
Who's shoes?
I'm just like, you know, we removed, the principals reviewing the suspension, right? Give me like a window, like breakdown of how this works now, like.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Dr. Brown do that, but I think the, the scenario ultimately is if. If the assistant principal has assigned the discipline, then the principal needs to review it. Isn't that right, Adam?
Which can be, does it say like, I get this on a Monday, like what's, what's like the day forecast for this? Cause it's gonna go pretty quick on business days.
It is. So the, I think it's important to note that when we say review of short-term suspension, we're referring to like an appeal, right? If a parent disagrees with it, um, right now they have two days to request a review of the suspension. It goes directly to student services for that review. Um, this is proposing that when the assistant principal notifies the parent of the out-of-school suspension. They have one day to say, I would like the principal to review this. If the principal determines to uphold that recommendation or they're not happy with their decision. They will have an additional two days to request a review to student services for a final review.
And, sorry, short-term suspension is how many days?
One to ten days. And then anything beyond ten days requires a review from a discipline hearing here at central office.
Where is the suspended child during those review days?
They would be serving that suspension.
In school or out of school?
Out of school. The, the suspension's intact. If there is a overturn of the suspension based on the review, that would be reflected in their discipline record.
Mr. Hoseng, you have a question?
I was just gonna ask, um, why the reduction from two days to one for the parents to request. Basically an appeal or a, or a look by the principal?
I think it's around because it's an additional step that has to be taken. Because if it, if it's a three or four day suspension and the parent reviews it twice. They're having to now have three or four total days before it can actually be reviewed by two, two levels. So we wanted to help expedite that. The other part of it too is, eh, you know, typically if a parent is not satisfied with the outcome of it. We will hear from that parent and we will honor the two or three days that it takes to reach out to us if, if needed. But we, we would ask that and work with administration when they're calling and notifying parents of a suspension. To let them know, make sure they're aware of the appeal process. If you disagree with it, here are the steps we need to know within twenty-four hours.
I guess I'm just a little concerned, um, if the parent doesn't, for some reason get back within the one day. Do they miss out their right or possibility of having this being reviewed by the principal? I mean, if they, if they go on day two, have they missed their opportunity?
Well, right now there's not necessarily a review by the principal, which is another, a, another item that we're trying to. Correct. Does that make sense?
Makes perfect sense. I, I'm just looking at it from the parent perspective. That if, if we're limiting it to one day and they, on day two, they come forward and say that they would like the principal to look at this. Is the decision gonna be, oh, you only had one day, you missed it, sorry. Or are you gonna, we gonna allow the principal to look at it?
Student services.
Dr. Brown?
I think we could continue to work with, um, cause there's often times we notify parents at the end of the day. Of suspension, we can't get in touch with them. Perhaps sometimes the parent or the student comes to us and says no, but. Uh, we can work with administration to, if it's beyond the twenty-four hours, but within a timely manner, we could work with honoring, honoring that review. Our initial review with the families, if that makes, we just don't wanted to have two, three, four weeks down the road. Where they're saying, I disagree with it. I'd like for review. We'd like to have it done in a timely expedited manner.
Overall, they have more days because they have a day with, for principal review and then they have. If they're still not satisfied, they have two days to then take it to the next level.
Correct, but I, I'm, I guess.
Say just, you're saying if they miss the first one.
If they miss the first one, they're not gonna get the second one. And, and I know why it was just moved from two days to, or from two days one. And I completely understand if it's a three-day suspension and the parent comes on day two, uh, it's a little, might be a little late. But I, it, to me, it seems like you're taking a, a benefit away from the parent where you're only giving them one day to. Request, uh, uh, an appeal on this.
Yeah, I, and I don't happen to know the appeal data points like I used to when I was a high school principal. If generally something is going to be appealed, you know almost immediately that it is going to be appealed. Like in that initial conversation to say your student has been suspended for, I'm going to appeal. I, so I mean, I, I don't know. If we have like the, the day counter, but.
Cause it's usually, it's a conversation, right? Usually it's not like it comes in the mail and then they have a day.
It is, it is a conversation and the parent follows that up with either an email or says it verbally. Is that right, Adam?
That's correct.
My, my perspect, my perspective and perception in bringing this forward was that. There are times within the building that assistant principals are making disciplined decisions as they, as they should. But w- we want to dial the principal into that perspective in terms of another layer of review if a parent wants that appeal. And not necessarily having that appeal review come to central office before the principals had an opportunity to review that at the building level.
And I fully support that and I think that, that is definitely the right approach. My, my only concern is taking it from one day to two, or from two days to, to one day. For the op, parent to have the opportunity to have it looked at.
If, if we were to come back to the board at the middle part of next year and say, okay, this is how many appeals we've received. This is how many that were over the deadline, would that give you greater comfort so that we're not necessarily removing that option from parents? I, I don't think it's an issue, but I understand what you're, what you're suggesting.
Well, I mean. If nine times out of ten, the parent's gonna let the assistant principal know during that initial phone call. Then it won't matter if we put two days in there or one, or leave it at two days as opposed to one, so.
Can I piggyback on this too? I, I think this also allows for it to be reviewed because this goes on students' record no matter what. So I, I wanna provide as much time as possible for it to be reviewed within the building before it gets, you know, I think that's what the whole point is, like we. I don't think this was mentioned to us when we talked about this actually, so that's why I'm kinda cut off guard for the number of time. I, I want there to be more time. Though the student is very well known and is, there's a scenario, right? Like, when it comes here, it's like, it does create a different scenario of like how it's being perceived and how. Right? I think that's what we're trying to get after too is like, when you come to central office, it feels different, right? When you're in the building, like you have an opportunity for. People who know that student, interact with that student daily to, to give the services that they need or have a conference that feels more serious. But I, I think this needs to be kinda thought about with more, more time for the part, like this goes on students' records, so.
Just for clarity, it goes on the discipline record. It doesn't go on the academic transcript and I think that's.
Still enough for parents to care, like the work record means, you know, my mom was the same way, so it doesn't really matter to her. Just, it's a record, so.
Dr. Brown?
One's important, one's not.
If, if it's the, if it's the will of the board to go with two versus one, then, then obviously, uh, it. You, you drive the policy governance-wise. I think if you were asking me for a recommendation, I would say I'm comfortable with the way it's written.
You wanna just? Go around, I don't know if anyone else feels strongly. We have two, two in favor of two days. You look like you. Ms. Chen?
I, I don't have a strong opinion.
Mrs. Hunley?
I don't have a, I don't know.
Up here, I will take up your option. I would like to see a review on this. I just think that there's not enough for me to like digest, like the one to two days and like we're leaving trust in your hands to do it. And that's okay. I just think like, I don't know enough about this topic to be like, taking this from one to two. I think there are parents who. Like, I think when Dr. Brown tells us, at the end of the day, they're told like, I wouldn't want till my mom, I was suspended till I have to, right? Like, that's how it works, like. And this is what we're talking about here, right? It's just how, how it is, like, I've been disappointed, like, you know, it's like, if I can get through dinner and like go to bed, like, it's probably be okay. You know, but I'm just being honest.
The expectation is at the school level, the school is reaching out to the parent. We don't want to leave it necessarily to the student to share the not-so-good news. Only the good news is what we want the stu- student to share.
I know, I'm just telling you I was the best student ever and I didn't, I knew where the, like a landline was and all that stuff. I'm just telling you like, that's what I want. And I'm happy to see the data and I'm, I just, I wanna particularly have this conversation for that purpose, so, thank you.
I think that we, um. There's, there, there are. Could it be if, if a parent does miss the initial day, could they still have two days to appeal to central office? That's the way it was. Uh, these two days.
I think so.
With, so, I think we should, I think we should leave it the way it, it was written, um, and, and if you're saying that. If you miss the, the first day with the principal, you could still have two days with, I mean, someone's gonna still review it is what. I think that's what Mr. Hoseng was worried about. If you miss the first day, that no one's gonna review it at all. So could there still be a, a second layer of review if you miss the first day?
Yes.
Would that help you, Mr. Hoseng?
Well, if the, if the parent isn't, I, I guess I don't understand that. If, if the parent doesn't.
Then it would be exactly like it was before for that person who missed the principal review. Un- unless this principal works with them.
I agree, it's fine.
And we're not voting until, um, next, next meeting, so maybe, maybe we can think about it?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, our one and only action item. Can I have a motion to approve personnel actions, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Second, ma'am, sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley and Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Thank you. Oh, yes.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordio?
Aye.
Alright, board member comments?
You want me to do everybody's? Well, fifth grade had their senior walks. That was very good for young people to see. We gave out two hundred thousand, over two hundred thousand dollars in scholarships to ninety-three children, students across three schools. We went to several, um, graduations as we said, including Head Start. For, and, um, we had our last, uh, play, Hades Town. And if you haven't been in the black box, it was the first time I had experienced the black box for a play and that was great. And we also, just to talk about somebody that's left the school, there was a poet, Lacroix Nixon, who won the, um, slam poet contest. And will be moving on and he went to Warhail High School. And, um, so, yeah, we have great students doing great things. And I do wanna say to Mr. Brown, thank you for the student handbook. I, I jumped in with questions. I'm trying to work on that without, but I like the format and I really like the piece for the resources for parents. Cause that's very important, cause I hear, you know, things happen and then there's, they don't feel they have any support. So I wanted to say that I was excited to see that format.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mr. Hoseng?
Uh, just very quickly, uh, I'll piggyback off what Dr. Kieger said. Um, congratulations to two thousand twenty-five GED ISAEP graduates, uh, the great job with everything you did. Uh, again, thank you for the, um, all the individuals who are retiring. Um, there was a great ceremony and, uh, appreciate everything that they've done for our, our students. And I'll just very, touch very quickly, um, we had at least one teacher. Uh, we had, uh, I, I've had several parents talk to me about the family life, fourth and fifth grade, um, instruction. I think that we need to really relook that next year as to what, uh, the students are learning, um, what they're being presented, uh, based on what. We've, we've been presented with, and I'm not sure if anyone else has looked at the video. I've looked at the video and I. I tend to agree with, with the teacher and parents are saying that it's probably not appropriate for fourth and fifth graders.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, ma'am, Chair. Um, I suppose I congratulate the Honey Wheelers for their national championship at Texas. Um, they're from JB, A Blaine, Blatton, fifth grade. Um, they did some amazing STEM work and. I don't think we talked about this room yet, so I just wanted to congratulate them and, and we're looking forward to graduation. I also similarly agree with Mr. Hoseng. I think we should take a thorough look at looking at our family life curriculum, whether that means like giving the board members, like here's what the day in a fourth grader is. And then we come back and look at this. I, I think it's worth our time, so, or both in fifth grade, I apologize. Cause we had two discussions so far and they've both kinda been weird and those things, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Chen?
Um, I'll just highlight, um, some teachers and some students that, um, I've been able to spend time with at the various events. Um, that Ms. Hunley mentioned. Um, so at the retirement ceremony. Um, I got to speak with Ms. Mays, who's a art teacher at Warhail High, or she was, she still is right now, art teacher. At, um, Warhail High School, but, um, she was finishing up her forty-first year in education and twenty-plus with us. Um, so I mentioned her because we observed her class. Um, so it was, um, a privilege to be able to see her in action and then to spend an evening talking to her and getting to know her. Because I think at the heart of our division, it really is about our teachers and our students. And, um, I'll also just quickly say, um, the other students that I got to chat with were, um, students who volunteered their time. And their talents, their musical talents, uh, to provide, um, this was Mr. Hutter and his students, um. The entertainment, um, they came to two different events, GED graduation as well as retirement. So, um, appreciate their time and their talent and their commitment to music in WJCC.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Cavazos?
Uh, yes, um, I'm gonna congratulate all the, already, those folks have already graduated and those two graduate. And I hope everybody has a good summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner.
Um, I will just wrap up of, uh, they got to see the jazz concert. I got to see the elementary school version of it. And so a big shout out to all of our elementary school music teachers, but I got to see Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Salee. And to see where they were in December in that concert. See where they ended the year is amazing and to see how that then feeds into the wonderful performances that you all experienced.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Um, yes, congratulations to everyone who is finishing, whatever they're finishing, whether it's your. Time in K-12, whether it's your time teaching, whether it's your, just got through the year. Just congratulations to everyone who's, who's, um, ending and moving on to something new. Um, and we hope everyone has a very happy, safe, uh, wonderful, relaxing summer. Um, upcoming events, the Duke of Gloucester Senior Street, uh, Duke of Gloucester Street Senior Parade. Um, will take place tomorrow evening, June fourth at five thirty PM on Duke of Gloucester Street. Jamestown High School graduations, oh, we, we have all the graduation ceremonies on June seventh, Saturday, June seventh. Jamestown High School kicks it off at nine AM at Kaplan Arena. Lafayette High School will take place at one thirty at the Kaplan Arena and Warhail High School graduation at six PM in the Kaplan Arena. School Liaison Committee meets on June thirteenth at one PM here in room three hundred of the NX. And the Policy Committee meets on June sixteenth at eight thirty AM in room two oh three of the School Board and Central Office. And our upcoming meetings, we have closed session starting at six PM on June seventeenth. Um, here in room three hundred, followed by our regular meeting, uh, at six thirty PM on June seventeenth in the James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. We have a special call meeting on June thirtieth at three thirty PM here in room three hundred to, um, just approve some personnel actions. And then on July eighth, um, we have closed session beginning at four PM in room three hundred, followed by work session and action items. Uh, four thirty PM in room three hundred of the NX. Our agenda items are set for our next regular meeting and this meeting is adjourned.